Good, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting. We are back virtual and with that I want to go ahead and read something. Welcome, everyone, as you can tell, this meeting looks a little different due to COVID-19 pandemic. We are holding our meeting via video teleconference because the city council has declared a local emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic. State statutes allow us to hold our meetings remotely. Even though we aren't meeting in person, we want to make sure the public can participate. If you have joined the Zoom meeting, you will notice that you are muted. We have a moderator on the call who will unmute those who wish to speak during the public comment portions of the meeting. Public comments will be reserved for visitor presentation, public hearings, or special circumstances determined by the commission council. Once we reach those parts of the agenda, I will ask if there are any public comments. If you wish to speak or have joined the meeting by computer or tablet, please click on participants on the bottom of your screen and then select raise your hand icon. If you wish to speak and have joined the meeting by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Once your hand is raised, the moderator will announce your name and phone number and unmute your line. Please remember that public comment is provided at the discretion of the council and is meant to provide productive discourse on topics related to the city of Chaska. Speakers shall refrain from comment or behavior that is deemed disorderly, derogatory, obscene, or indecent or off-topic. Any person engaging in any such speech or action may be muted or removed from the meeting. Those of you watching online or on Comcast 15, please be aware of the following. Some of our council members, city staff, and presenters are participating in a meeting remotely. There is a delay between the live broadcast and online and cable broadcast. All council actions will be taken by roll call vote. We are working hard to protect everyone's health and safety and make sure your voice can be heard. Thank you for your patience as we work through this unprecedented situation. And obviously, we were Zoom earlier and we went back to going live and with the numbers that have been increasing at just crazy rates, we have decided to go back to the virtual mode again. So, so that's kind of where we are right now. And with that, we will stand and do the pledge of allegiance. And Kevin, you got a flag, right?
Yep, hold on a second.
All right.
Yeah, one second, Luke.
All right, yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everyone. That will take role. Nate, we want to call role, please.
Yes, council member Wong. Council member Gra.
Here.
Council member Hatfield.
Here.
Council member Hubbard.
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Here. All right, moves us to adopting the agenda or the corrections or additions to the agenda, if not an entertaining motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by councilor Hatfield.
Second by Hubbard.
Second by councilmember Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing none, councilmember Gra.
Aye.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Mayor Winchell, yes. Passes five O. Moves us on to adopt action item, which is five A, adopt resolution 2019-91, which is a declaration that we go to all virtual meeting platform. I don't know if there's that. Matt, do you need to introduce this or do we just need to vote?
Yeah, just a, just a quick one, mayor and council members. The item in front of you tonight, so one of the things that we're doing a little bit different than when we had the distance meetings back in March and April is that we had somebody present at City Hall during those. The numbers, obviously, were significantly different. And Denise put together the staff report to sort of talk about some of the changes that we've seen in COVID rates. And in speaking with our city attorney, we do have the ability to go all Zoom. But we need to make a declaration, you know, indicating why we're going to a virtual meeting platform. And what I would suggest is that we approve, consider approving this now. I would expect that we would probably be in this through the end of December. And then at the end of December, then we would make you know, reevaluate to see where we're at and then determine if, if it makes some sense to be able to bring people back together again. So, again, this is a detail that we need to take to allow us to go to an all-virtual format. And there is a resolution to approve of that.
Okay. Do I, do I need to read that resolution?
No.
Okay. So then with that, are there, are there any questions regarding the resolution? Okay, if there are none, then entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved by councilmember Gra.
Motion by councilmember Gra.
Second by Hatfield.
Second by councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none, councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilmember Gra.
Aye.
Mayor Winchell, yes. Passes five O. All right, moves us to moves us to item six, which is visitor presentation. And tonight, we have with us Met Council and representative from District Four, Deb Barber, who is our obviously council representative to the Met Council. And she is here to discuss the Met Council and transit issue updates. So Ms. Barber, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to come present here tonight. So just from a technical perspective, Matt, do I need to share my screen for the slides?
I, I believe so. Kevin, you don't have it already downloaded?
Uh, I, I can get it.
I can get it. Just give me a quick second.
Okay.
Can you see it?
Yep.
All right, good. Well, thank you again for having me out. So most of, some of you know me, some of you don't. So as the mayor mentioned, I am Deb Barber. I'm the Met Council representative for District Four. District Four is most of Scott and Carver County. So it's all Carver County except for the city of Chanhassen and all of Scott County except for the four townships south of Prior Lake and Elko New Market. So all told, it's better part of two counties, 15 cities and 17 townships. On the council, I'm one of two council members who served under both Governor Dayton and then were reappointed under Governor Walz. So I've been on the council since 2015. I think that's a huge benefit to the communities I represent because I came to the, to this term with a lot of information, a lot of background. The way that the council is currently structured is there are 16 geographic representatives and then a council chair. And the chair serves at large. And then we have some very distinct subcommittees that do a lot of the actual, I would say, operational work. And that's the Transportation Management Environment and Community Development Committee. I also chair the Transportation Committee and then I also serve with Mayor Winchell on the Transportation Advisory Board. So a couple of things that was brought up that wanted to discuss were both issues and questions around the Blue Ribbon Committee. And then also just to talk about transit and our relationship and how we work with suburban transit providers. So first to chat a little bit about council governance. So this fall, Governor Walz established this Blue Ribbon Committee in August to establish the structure and services of the Met Council. The overall commission was tasked with looking at the role of elected versus appointed members, our role as the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and then the effectiveness of the delivery of the regional transit service. This committee is charged with getting, having these conversations and having conversations both with with us. We're like, our, at council, we're staffing it so like we help them operate in meetings and things like that. But they're really independent of us. But you can get to their meetings and get to the videos and downloads of their meetings through our website, which is kind of a good way to see some of the conversations that they've been having. And they've been meeting every other week and then they're supposed to really finish up their work by the end of December and submit some sort of recommendations or report to the governor. So, you know, it's one of those things that I wouldn't say I'm directly involved with. I like everyone else's watching and, and listening to the conversations. I don't know what will, will come out of it. I think they've had some good discussions. It'll be interesting even from my perspective to see what the, the group decides on. And it was a mix of different people who serve on that group. And so it's chaired by Mary Liz Holberg, a county commissioner in Dakota County. But there's representatives from the Minnesota Department of Transportation, the audit or legislative auditor of Metro Cities, Citizens League, and suburban, and suburban transit association. So there's, it's got a broad representation and they've had a lot of really good conversations. But it will be very interesting to find out also from my perspective what they come up with. So as I told you, I chair the Transportation Committee. There's two distinct groups and activities that take place under transportation. There's MTS, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Services. And they do the planning side for, for the metropolitan region. Then they also do operate our contracted services. So things like Metro Mobility and Transit Link. The relationship with the suburban transit providers goes through MTS. The other side of our, our transportation is Metro Transit, which is the operator of the transit services for all of the areas except what is served by the suburban transit providers. So as we talk a little bit about how, how the funding works through different, through the different groups and how it moves out into the broader system, we start really looking at first as sort of the federal or the overall transportation funding. The key takeaway for this for me always is these numbers. That 97% of, of transportation funding right now is dedicated. It means that it's, it goes, it's already set aside to specific things. There's only a small amount that's flexible. And so that really sort of dictates some of our decisions and how, especially when we look at some of the things that we're doing, like for example, some of the work mayor that we do through TAB, you know, that's some of the funding that can be a little bit more flexible. So then overall, if we start now to break down and look at a little more specific of the metro area transit funding. So there's two different sides of things. There's transit operating and transit capital. So transit capital, that's the money that comes from regional transit capital bonds, federal formula dollars. Those are things that we use to by and large pay for buses. So through those, those mechanisms, we pay for buses, both for Metro Transit and for the suburban transit providers. And then we've got other things like this, which is the regional solicitation dollars or some of the programs like New Starts. So New Starts is a program, that's, that's where the full funding grant agreement for Southwest LRT came out of that program. The regional solicitation is a chunk of federal dollars that comes to us every couple of years. That TAB goes and they do the work of figuring out how to allocate that money to projects. We're right in the middle of that process right now. And TAB will be meeting about it both this week and, and then deciding, voting on, on advancing the recommendations for the allocation of those funds by the end of the year. For operating, it's a little different. So the operating funds, it's done through three primary things. One is motor vehicle sales tax. You'll hear me call that M Vest. I've always found it very interesting that the operation of buses is funded by the sales of cars. So just the way things are set up right now. And then the second thing is fairs. And the third thing is state general fund money. And those are the things that go out to pay for transit operating. You'll see that little green box in the middle. We'll get to a little explanation of why some of the counties have some funds that go into both of those in a future slide. All right, so how do we do our funding when it comes to, especially to M Vest? So M Vest gets forecasted twice a year. And at council, we budget at a 95% level because of what we anticipate towards those budgets. Because obviously the sales of cars can be quite volatile. Right now, so far, the M Vest numbers have not been too bad this year, but we just don't know when and if that's going to change. And, but there is, I think, broad concern and I think this is a shared concern between us at council and I think the suburban transit providers in different ways that without dedicated funding and some stable sources of revenues, it's going to be very, it gets really hard to budget as we're going forward. So as the money comes in for M Vest, then it gets allocated out. So it comes into, into council and gets allocated out to the suburban transit providers. And there's four suburban transit providers, Maple Grove, Plymouth, Southwest, and MVTA. So some of the history on STP funding. So STP is suburban transit provider. From 2008 to 2018, the STPs received two different kinds of allocations. One was a statutory fixed number. And then there was this other thing called regional allocation based on need. And it was called, they called it R I M Vest. It was an extremely confusing formula. I think it led to a lot of oh, complexity that didn't need to be in there. And so we'll talk a little bit how we restructured that going forward. But the other sources then that the suburban transit providers, besides the M Vest that comes through, is they also have income from fairs, advertising leases. And also sometimes they get occasional one-time fund allocations, general fund allocations. A good example was the MVTA bus route that goes from the Mall of America out to Shakopee. This last legislative cycle got allocated $200,000, 200 or 250, can't quite remember. But that was sort of a one-time funding thing. So as I said before, 2018, this, this R I M Vest was very confusing and did become a point of contention. So in 2017, the legislature increased that allocation. And what we did with that is we restructured then how money would move through us. So now it goes just as a block grant. So what that does is that helps provide, it provides a little more certainty. There's not a lot of confusion. That prior R I M Vest approach used to factor in how much different operators had in reserves and lots of other things. We don't do that anymore. But a couple of other key things that, as we talk about transit funding that we want to talk about and be very clear about is we have these things that are mandates that we have to fund first. So if, as you said, we have just those certain buckets that go for operating that we can pull from. And the things that we have to pay for first are Metro Mobility, Blue Line, Green Line, and North Star. And that's by either state or federal statute. And so those are things that if, if the amount of M Vest goes down, no matter what, we have to pay those things first. And then that would then decrease the amount of funds that would go to Metro Transit or suburban transit providers. If those numbers came in, the M Vest numbers came in too low.
So Deb, Deb, if I could teach you to pause a sec. I understand a metro mobility is a, is a mandate. What's the blue line and, and the green line? And, and I know what the North Star is.
Right.
I'll just let that go. But why are the blue line and the green line federally mandated?
Those aren't federally mandated, those are state mandated. So Metro Mobility has two different areas that are mandated. One is a federal area and one is a state area. So the state area actually expands it. So the Blue Line, Green Line, North Star are state mandates. Metro Mobility is a combination of the two.
So are the, are the blue line and green line just like, are they, are they BRTs downtown?
Oh, no, no, no. Blue Line, Green Line are the LRTs. The light rails.
Okay, okay. Got it.
All right, so now, so how does, how does the funding get distributed out? You can see here sort of the, the percentages and the percentages as well as the bus ridership shares. And you can see, you know, we try to keep things pretty balanced as much as we can. Trying to make sure that, you know, that funding goes through. And right now, even at that, what we're doing with the, the amount that we have at the 11.12% is actually above the actual statutory requirement. So the other thing that we have, sometimes that happens is, and this doesn't happen every year because, and we'll talk a little bit about how the legislature has been funding us with one-time funding. And this is the whole transit system with one-time general funds. If we have extra general funds left over, which happened once, I think, like in 2018, we actually distributed that back out to the suburban providers in the same ratios. It's not something we had to do, but we felt it was kept, keeping in spirit with the policy of how we've sort of established how funds would move in and out through us. Okay, when we talk back a few slides about the little green square where the counties get tied into things. One of the questions that we get is, so if you're building these A B R Ts or you're building these other things, you know, how, how do you manage the operating expenses and things like that?
And Deb, just for, just for the folks that might not be aware of, can you just kind of tell what some of these initials are, the L B R T and, or the L R T and the B R T?
Sure.
People are understanding that?
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. I, I've been here long enough that I sometimes talk in acronyms. So, and I'll tell you that one of my first days on Transportation Committee, I think I got like a 10-page list of acronyms. So, so L R T is the light rail. B R T is Bus Rapid Transit. There's two different kinds of Bus Rapid Transit. One is Highway B R T and the other is Arturo B R T. Highway B R T is something like the red line that goes up and down 77. Arturo B R T goes through more local areas. The way we offset the expenses of operating some of those things is in reality, we put these A B R Ts on the, the, on the, the areas of our highest bus ridership. And so then we actually then decreased the local service. And because these A B R Ts, they run on, you know, on a really common cycle so that you don't have to sit and plan out when, when do you need to be at a bus stop to be able to catch the next bus, basically go to a stop and there's going to be a bus there in a few minutes. And it just operates consistently up and down the same corridors all day. So they're very efficient, they're a good way to move people. And like we said, we actually just go in on some of our really high-frequency lines and we replace them with A B R Ts. As, as, once we get to a point that the ridership was high enough that it makes sense to in those corridors. We just got funding through, through the bonding belt for, to finish out the funding for the B line and the D line, which again will replace two of our busiest, busiest transit corridors. Now, when I talked about how the counties are tied in with some of the operating and capital funds, when it comes to things like the blue line, the green line, sort of the light rails, or even some of these other transit ways, counties contribute to that. And sometimes the agreements include an agreement to help pay for operating. So one of the lines that's going to be coming up soon will be the orange line. And that other, we have, I think, Dakota and, and Hennepin County as well as us participating in the cost to operate that. We mentioned, I mentioned this a little bit earlier. If you look at sort of the transit capital, the transit capital, especially when it comes to all the buses, is at council, we purchase all of the fleet. So all the buses that are operated by Metro Transit and the ones that are operated even by, by Metro Mobility, which is by and large contracted services and the suburban transit providers are purchased by us. Now, as you might imagine, things have been tough over the last year. There have been some dramatic changes in, in our, our ridership and how we have to operate in the COVID environment. There were a lot of really tough conversations early on. We got very lucky that that part of the Cares Act did help find, provide money to transit providers. And those transit providers were us as well as the suburban transit providers. And so these are the, the totals for the funds that are going out from either to Metro Transit or out to our, the various suburban transit providers and to the University of Minnesota. Okay, so pause there for questions on the, the joys of talking transportation and transit funding?
Questions for Deb?
I just had one question. When the light rail comes into Eden Prairie, I'm not sure what that line will be called, but I'm assuming that it would go under something that was mandated as well.
Yeah, so, yes, it does. So it, it is actually called, we all call it Southwest LRT, but it's actually technically the Green Line Extension. So it's an extension from the line coming out of St. Paul. It just adds on to it all the way out to Eden Prairie.
Deb, I just want to add a clarification. When you were talking about who the members of the Blue Ribbon Commission are, there's no one in the Commission who represents a suburban transit association.
I thought there was somebody. I could be wrong.
I'm an STA, I know, I know for a fact no one is.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, we're only given five minutes to present for all of STA, but that's another issue.
Again, that we're, we're not the runs running those meetings. So yeah, I, I totally understand some of that.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think you're probably, for the suburban transit providers, there's a couple of former Met Council chairs who are really familiar with what you guys do. And I think that's actually quite helpful because they know, they, they know what, what the suburban transit providers add to the regional transit system. So I think that's been helpful for some of those conversations.
But they haven't, they haven't been real friendly to the opt-outs, so.
No. That's a, that's a whole different issue.
Yeah.
It's like
we'll actually keep on on that one.
Yeah.
Sounds good. I will just keep rolling then. All right, does anyone have any other questions on sort of the funding side of things?
So just a fair question, actually. So you purchase, or the Met Council purchase all the buses regardless if they're an opt-out suburb or MSB? So if there's a decision to make, so decisions get made at that level for like clean energy buses, that type of thing, it's not done by the individual services?
We work with them when they're looking at doing some initiatives. And I will say like Southwest Transit also, like they've had, if I recall, and I, I would have to maybe, maybe councilmember, you can maybe make sure I've got this right. They just applied for and got a grant where they were able to purchase some custom buses that sort of suited more special services. So all of the suburban providers have opportunities to do those sorts of things as well. You know, like we do have an electrification program that we're working on. Some of that's probably going to get pushed out longer time period than we want. And, and, and that's because with COVID, we haven't had buses, as many buses operating. And the lifetime of a bus has depended how many times, or how long it's, how long it's been running and how many miles and all those sorts of things. So, so some of that's getting pushed out. The one thing that as this, as we look at, if we were to bring in electrification to the suburban providers, we'd have to talk about the infrastructure. You know, I would say we've had a good partnership with Excel as we brought on some electric buses. And, you know, it'd be interesting to see if they could replicate something like that or, you know, because, because it's, some of that upfront infrastructure is actually a bit of a challenge.
Yeah, I'll add a little bit to that. So as part of, so Metropolitan Council Service is an MPO, which is a Metropolitan Planning Organization for the region. And because they are the MPO, the federal government recognizes them as the decision-makers for capital purchases. So that means all regional transit providers have to go through Met Council in order to make any purchases of buses, which is why that process, was just the way the process works. That also means that any grants or things that we apply for also have to go through Met Councils to pass through, even though we're doing all the paperwork. So, but we specify the equipment, the type, we have to have our plans for what the, you know, the, the depreciation, life expectancy, repairs, maintenance, all that stuff. We still, we maintain all of that within the individual transit agencies.
And that's kind of strange because then they have to report it back to us because we have to report it to F T A. And so, you know, when you talk about some of those, the interesting dynamics, sometimes it gets, it gets complicated. But I think the other thing that's beneficial for the purchasing of buses is, we're a big organization. So we can, we probably can use that to hopefully get some better deals that, you know, help provide some efficiencies for everybody. Okay, additional questions? All right. And if, and if you ever think of something after this, feel free to reach out to the mayor. And Councilmember Hine will let you know that I'm pretty accessible and more than happy to chat and answer questions. So don't hesitate to reach out. I thought, given, you know, sort of where we're at in the middle of 2020 here, it would be good to talk a little bit about COVID-19 and transportation. And I think that's highly relevant to suburban providers. It's highly relevant to Metro Transit as well because we also have a lot of suburban and commuter services. And clearly some of that has changed this year. So we took some steps right away. We adjusted down to about a 60% service level in, in March. We increased that up to 80% to pre-pandemic service. We did change the frequency on our light rails. We definitely reduced the number of trips on North Star. We shifted how we do Metro Mobility. So Metro Mobility was a shared ride service. Now we would have a single person. And, but then also there was a concern that, because these are contracted services, if everything was going to drop off so much, how were our contracted entities be, going to be able to kind of keep themselves going and keep their operators hired, employed as well? So we started doing some things like grocery and food delivery, rides for essential healthcare workers. And it has worked really well. And as Metro Mobility slowly starting to ramp up, we've still been able to keep doing some of that and keep those operators employed. We are doing some other just basic things on some of our lines is, you know, some of those high-frequency lines that aren't A B R Ts yet, we're adding longer buses or we're adding more frequent buses so that people can space out and so you can have social distancing. And some of that, that has been very effective. One of the other big things that we've done that as we brought the service back to pre-pandemic levels is we did not bring back our commuter and suburban services because it's not needed right now. We're finding things like the A B R Ts are maintaining ridership and local routes are, that you're not seeing that same dynamic with commuter services. So some of this, if you look overall of just how travel has changed, and this is sort of a good snapshot from the beginning of the year to the end of September, you can see that, you know, in greater Minnesota, you're starting to see where traffic on the roads is coming back, but there's still a pretty good decrease of traffic here in, in the metropolitan region. I know I see it when I go out and when, anytime I've had to be on the roads, that congestion isn't nearly as bad. We don't know what this trend's going to keep looking like or how it's going to change, but it is something we're monitoring very closely because it does impact not only ridership, but it also impacts even things. I'm sure like, you know, how we're going to build in mid-pass lanes and where do some of those things need to be factored in. As we talked a little, all right, there were really big changes that we've seen on our transit ridership. I'm sure none of this is vastly surprising. I know Councilmember Hine, you've seen a lot of these things from Southwest Transit. They're having similar, similar conversations about commuter and suburban transit, especially those, the, the services that take people back and forth from the suburbs to downtown. What we are finding is, you know, like this has dropped off and has stayed dropped off. People who can telework are teleworking and we are not seeing a change in that. We are seeing some stabilization here where you look at really some of those B R T lines. In fact, we've been really impressed. Like now we only have two of the A B R Ts are operational, but they are taking a, a big chunk of ridership and doing fairly well through all of this right now. So we see that there is still a desire for transit and need for transit, but we have to kind of keep revisiting how we're going to look at transit as we build, as we build back to pre-pandemic levels. And even talking about, you know, how do we manage our financing and things like that? Because we want to think about pre-pandemic levels, not where we're at today because that really is the transit system that we kind of want across the region. So same story for Transit Link and Metro Mobility, obviously dropped off. It is starting to increase. We're starting to see that trend right now. A lot of times, sometimes this is getting people to jobs. Sometimes it's getting to people to, to doctor's appointments. So Transit Link is almost your dialer ride service. Metro Mobility is your paratransit. So it's, it's sort of aligns with Americans for Disabilities Act and, and helping people to, to get around. And we will likely see that come back some more. But like I said, some of the flexibility we've been able to do was to provide some unique services during the pandemic to communities that needed some help, like the food deliveries. So obviously there's going to be an impact on revenues. We, so far, like the, we talked about M V E S, we budgeted the 95%. Our earlier forecast, we haven't got, seen the one for November yet, is, was at 96%. So we're still holding all right there, but it's hard to say, you know, with the pandemic, what happens? And if that changes, then told you there were like the three buckets. It was M V E S, Transit Fares and State General Fund. So M V E S volatile, where I saw Mike with his fingers crossed, I agree. So far, so good. Transit Fares have been hit really hard. And even to some of, not even just with decreased ridership. Like for us, we, we shifted to rear door boarding at one point in time to keep our operators safe. Rear door boarding, rear doors don't have fare collecting systems. So, you know, so there were some things that, decisions that we had to make to help move people around, but also keep our operators safe. And then obviously we have a huge issue with the State General Fund deficit. And that really matters because we've been getting one-time money in chunks for a biennium out of the general fund to fund that other piece. And we don't know what will happen with that in the next legislative session. We were fortunate with the federal carriers' money that it started, it filled up enough of our, our, our funding gap to get us through 2021. So you guys get to spend a lot of time looking at budgets. And I'm sure if you look at this budget, you can see why it's a very, very scary-looking budget. There's a lot of red on there. So we are moving into a structural deficit. And that's because of the one-time funding that we get in chunks instead of having sort of a consistent funding source for those general fund dollars. It's something that, I know I've been working hard with the Suburban Transit Association. Councilmember Hine and I bolstered on a, a group of policymakers where we're talking about this, like, and we're actively talking about how can we all come together? Because I think there's a strong belief among these policymakers that if we come together with a united position, that'll help us in the legislature. Because I know our suburban transit providers, but get numbers like this too, with red on their graphs and don't like that either. And it makes it really hard to plan. It makes it hard to be smart with our investments and know how to direct funds. So this upcoming legislative session is very, very critical, I think, for all of the transit providers in the region. So it's just something definitely to consider. The other piece is what's the future of travel? So through TAB, we do this, it's called the T B I, Travel Behavior Inventory. It doesn't just go to transit riders, it goes to everybody who moves around the metropolitan region. We do sampling with people who drive cars, some who take the bus, people who bike, people who walk, you name it. And we do this every few years and this informs some of our investments. Well, when COVID happened, what we did is we went out to the group, we surveyed last. And then because they were a nice kind of built-in sample size, then, and so we went back to them and said, how has COVID changed what you do? And so we're starting to get some of those results. We want to use that to help inform where, where things might change and try and get a feeling for what we anticipate in the future. Some of the things that we found is for, across workers who, you can see if you use public transit, they're mostly teleworking. People who drove to work, mostly teleworking. People plan to, or people are planning to continue to, or, or, or right now are continuing to telework. There has not been a broad change. I know like for us, we've been told we're, you know, we're, we're sort of in this remote environment, at least through June. And you can say, even, you can see even changes in people who bike and walk. Overall, if you look at how this works, and this includes relative to the pre-outbreak break, teleworking has increased by eight times. And I think that people, employers are starting to find that it, people can successfully do this. Some employees are enjoying it and some, some not so much. But, you know, it is something that is definitely going to change how people actually travel. So one of the things we also asked is, we started, went out and started asking, do you think your employer will allow you to continue to telework? And the vast majority of people said they thought that it would be likely or somewhat likely. And that might mean that they telework part-time, might work different hours, might, you know, a variety of different scenarios. But there's generally a trend to more of a remote work lifestyle is what is anticipated by the people on our surveys. And so we take that and we start to look, so what will that telework culture do to reduce V M T? So V M T is vehicle miles traveled. And you can see from this survey that just counting people who wanted to work from home two days a week, that will reduce the number of round-trip commutes by $650,000 per week. So it does have a big impact both on how the roadway system's being used. But if you're looking at sustainability, if you're looking at commuter bus services, these are all things that we need to be talking about and thinking about and see what the long-term impacts are and how best do we build back up service? And do we revision some of the service in some of these areas where it's connecting people to jobs in different areas, not necessarily in Minneapolis or St. Paul? All right, so, so before this, 13% of adults had never teleworked before. And now they're teleworking five times, or five, five days a week. And we, again, we expect that they will continue to do this as they go forward. So next things, we're going to continue to monitor the travel behavior. We're, we'll go back out to the same group again a couple more times just to, you know, kind of continue to track and how people, if they start coming back and either using their cars or in the buses or however they're getting around. We are in the process right now of approving an updated version of our transportation policy plan. And one big section in the transportation policy plan is what are you going to study next? And those studies inform the next round of planning. And there are several fat things in there to, to talk about, some of the things that I've talked about relative to COVID and how people are moving around the city. So hopefully those things will inform and we'll be able to use those for better planning. And we talked about our work group with the suburban transit providers. And then, you know, I think the, the big thing, the big takeaway for everything as we talk is we really all have to figure out a way to work together to develop plans, how to secure additional funding to support our regional transit system. With that, I'll take any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, I know you talk a lot about the change of the worker. And I know there's not much hope in the near future for sporting events to come back.
Yeah.
But I would imagine some of your traffic downtown with light rails connected to some of those sporting events. I know that Timberwolves are not expecting to host fans. I think that was announced today. I'm just curious on how much of a bump that actually impacts? And if that is maybe something to look forward to in the spring, if things improve and, you know, fans get, come back into the stadiums?
Yeah, it, I, I don't have an exact number, but it does have an impact. Especially when you look at like North Star and how much those numbers are down. I mean, a lot of people would take that in for baseball games and football games. And yeah, so it does have an impact. It's hard, I, I would have to dig in to find out exactly how much. But I know we definitely, especially on our, our light rails, we definitely move a lot of people on games days that, which is not happening right now.
Yeah, I would suspect, I mean, my gut says that will come back before some of the people start working back in the office.
I think you're probably right. Once people feel safe to go out and, and do that kind of thing, that, that might be the thing that gets people back out, out on the transit system in a higher number.
All right, other questions for Deb?
Yeah, um, let's, I'll let others go if they want to go first.
Someone else have a question? Go ahead.
Okay, so, so Deb, thank, first of all, I just want to thank you for the, you know, coming and visit us and, you know, sharing and bringing the presentation along with you. And also thank you very much for all the work that you do representing us in Met Council, for all the work for roadways, housing funding, stormwater, sewage and a lot of these other infrastructure things. I don't know how many people realize that, you know, Met Council provides a lot of the core funding we need for a lot of different things around our community. So I wanted to make sure to call that out, because I thank you for supporting a lot of these things that are going on. So now, you know, we talked, and this, this presentation is very much focused on regional transit. And one of the key things is that the Blue Ribbon Commission is, you know, has, you know, has three different mandates in front of it. And one of the mandates right now, seems like their focus has shifted. They haven't really able to come to agreement on the first, so they haven't, they kind of settled in on the first two points. They're not going to do very much there. And the third point is the effectiveness of delivery of regional transit. And that, you know, like all of us in the S T A area, fairly nervous because, you know, we're seeing some comments coming out from like, you know, Peter Bell, former chair, says, "I'm concerned with the juice versus the squeeze question on the suburban provider's value," right? And, you know, Eileen Schermoff, right, she was the S V P for the Federal Reserve. I think the regional transit providers take away from system efficiency, right? You know, things that we've proven from, from our metrics that were incredibly efficient. And then Patrick Born, who's the Board Chair of Citizens, like, I think there's an argument that suburban providers are less efficient because they are small, which, you know, I would certainly counter that argument because we're providing a specific service that serves this population very effectively for what we're doing. And, you know, here within our community, we have a very high value in what, what services are provided by, you know, our regional transit providers, because they touch our residents directly and very much practically speaking, not just as a commuter service, but also because they provide that, that point-to-point transportation within our service area, within our community. We'd be able to innovate by creating services like Southwest Prime and so forth. The question I have for you is that, you know, we, we have a, we have a tremendous value in how much it impacts people on a day-to-day basis, even throughout the pandemic. Where like our point-to-point service is actually done very well and continuing, serving population, actually, you know, just as well as it has before. What are your plans to support the viability of Southwest Transit moving forward with this, you know, impending threat from the Blue Ribbon Commission and from, you know, the, the pressure to consolidate?
Well, I mean, that's a, right now, I think that's almost a tough question because I think similar to, similar to you, I, I'm sort of a bystander to some of the conversation. And so it kind of, until, I want to see what the recommendations are. And I can tell you, it doesn't, we don't necessarily know what they're going to be. I don't know that there's been agreement on any of the three points, to be honest, was sort of my impression. And, and I know, like, for example, when we did like the Metro Mobility Task Force, we came up with a bunch of suggestions and things, and some were done and some were not. So it's kind of a tough question to answer about something. I don't know the, the landscape yet. I would, I think, next one, so the next meeting is next, is it next Monday?
It was supposed to be next Monday. I saw it came off the calendar, but.
And that way, I would, that would be a good one to listen to because I don't know if they're going to start landing on a particular direction or not. But I, I'm also, I'm curious as to what's going to come out of it. I really am.
And you're right, sorry, it is next Monday. So the, the other, the other question is, is that, you know, that we have this ongoing challenge of funding. I think that that's something, it's a very critical impact that, because funding is scarce right now. And even pre-pandemic, it was, there was challenges with funding because, you know, because of the way, because of the way Ram V E S and M V E S are distributed. M V E S is much more straightforward because it's legislatively driven, right? Ram V E S is, has more of a formula behind it, so it's less discretionary than it used to be. But, you know, there's some challenges with the formulation of it. So one of the, the questions I have is that, you know, like when we look at how we move forward, how do we, how do we? you know, like when we look at how we move forward, how do we, how do we, and how do we ensure that we're, that we'll get the funding to continue to be able to provide the level of service as needed for our communities as, once we come out, as we come out of the pandemic and, you know, then understand that it'll take a while for things to return to normal, but we'll probably, you know, as we adapt, we'll probably shift gears, shift more towards the that point to point ridership and continue to serve our community in a more, you know, effective way. But how do we ensure that we make sure we have the funding necessary to provide the transportation to meet those, those needs to our communities?
You're going to get a million different answers to that question, but I think it's critical that we get a dedicated source of funding. And then I think like, there's been talk, and I, I don't know the, the governor's position on this at this point because they're still working through stuff for legislative session, but, you know, there had been talk for sure under the Dayton administration of, of some sort of metro area sales tax or something like that to help fund some transit. And just to having, I think if we got to the point where we weren't getting funded and, you know, two year chunks. I think it would make it easier for, for all of us. Because it would just be much more straightforward and you could plan better. And I think one of the key things is what frankly, one of the group that you and I are working on, I think that it was a critical group to get together. So what it is, is there's council members like bike in it from, that represent all four of those suburban transit providers and two Met Council members. So it's myself and council member Judy Johnson, who represents up Maple Grove and Plymouth area. And we're trying to have these conversations so that when it comes time to legislative session, we can all work together. Because I really think that's the only way we're going to have success.
I agree with you on that. One of the other key things that I think we need to look at is when we, when we look at relationships between, like, for example, the suburban transit providers and metro transit has been very strained over the years. And one of the, one of the challenges that we find is that there's a sort of a lack of willingness to collaborate, to share knowledge, or, you know, or even, even like in technology in some ways where, you know, said, oh, you know, in order to enter the, the, you know, the downtown bus garage, you need to have this transponder. We're not going to help you out with it. You got to spend like, you know, some, you know, it was some like fifty thousand dollars a bus or something like that to get it. Or, you know, even like the red line, you know, when the red line, the, as the red lines been kind of pulled back from M V C A. And one of the things that's been very distressing to the representatives of the M V T A is that the Met Council didn't provide any heads up or like a, a call out or something to those, to the legislators, the elected officials, the county commissioners, the, the cities. It was just a letter that went to the executive director, you know, Luther over the M V T A. I think there was some concern that, hey, it's just a notice that we're taking back service rather than having that heads up conversation. So how do we increase, increase that?
Yeah, and, and so, and that was like the red line, so I can explain a little bit so people understand what we're talking about. So the red line, when we go back to those transit ways, when we had the, the green box where I showed you some were paid for by the, the counties for operating and, and capital. There used to be this group called C T I B. Carver County was not a member of C T I B. But Dakota, Hennepin Ramsey, Washington Counties were. And they, when C T I B disbanded, so that was a way that got money out for, to build like the red line. To build the green line extension, some of those things, it was, went through this group called C T I B. The red line, as it was built, was being funded partly by Dakota County. In that process, that money that went into C T I B. So when C T I B dissolved, the deal was with Dakota County for them, when they wanted to withdraw from C T I B, that their the, the, the way that they did that, they said they would, would withdraw, but then they, a hundred percent of the cost of the red line would go to the council. So what we did is we, at the time, because it was kind of a quick decision, is we contracted the service with M V T A. So just like any other contracted provider, we're looking at it now as we were, and the contract is about to expire. And so that there's efficiencies if we bring it into metro transit. So it's not the intention to go out and, and find other lines and other areas of the region to pull in. This is just a very specific, a very specific example. And operationally, it saves us one point two million dollars, which you saw our red numbers. So we're looking for any way to improve those numbers.
Now, that's, that said, I mean, I, I think that, you know, one could make that argument, but the same token, I think that wasn't, that wasn't what rubbed those you know, the, the, the county city councils and rub the, you know, the legislators and the county commissioners the wrong way. It was that, it was just they got a notice rather than having some conversations, say, hey, you were having trouble, some finances are trying to balance the budget. Let's talk about this. Are there's things we could do with cost savings? Are there things we could, you know, engage with? Or even to say, hey, this is something that's coming ahead in the next couple of months, we're going to have to do rather than here's the Dear John letters, basically what they got. And I think that's the way that, you know, they took it. So I think that lack of transparency or communication, I think, was what caused a lot of consternation from, you know, from that community. For those member communities, because I think the last thing we want to see is effectively getting blindsided, saying this, something's happening and not having an opportunity to say, hey, let's kind of try to figure out, can we work together and partner on something? To do something that will benefit all the community, rather than, you know, being hit in the dark. And I think that's what we wanted to try to avoid. So the other, the last thing is that the Transit Values Study that's going on, that's driven by Met Council, one of the things that's, I, I was a, as a member of that Transit Value Study, one of the things to notice was that there's like seven or eight criteria that were all used for measurement of, you know, of potential regional transit and, you know, direction around that. And every single one of their criteria that's used was, was very much criteria that was heavily favored against highly urbanized areas. So they asked, you know, and, you know, because you look at, for example, it was like, you know, like the population density, you know, population density, density of low income. A ridership that, you know, appoint the density of jobs and things like that. So there, you know, all things that tend to favor highly compacted areas. So the ask would be, is that it would be possible to advocate for inclusion of factors that that do represent some of the reasons why we have regional transit. From, you know, from the suburban perspective, like, you know, pollution mitigation or traffic mitigation, for example.
So I can send you, so we are just going, have, you know, kind of been formalizing some of that. There's another workshop that's coming up. I hope you've signed up for that. And, and one of the things came out of that was basically that people, the people of the work group, and really, the idea of this whole process was, you know, what do you value in your transit system, you know, is it moving people to jobs? Is it getting people to school? Is it, you know, is it, is it equity? You know, all these different things that you lay out. And what we found, I think that work group result really had, there was one for sort of supporting that urban local side and one that really was supporting suburban transit. And as the make two main priorities, which I actually was quite heartened with because I think that shows that we do want to think regionally. And so there was a lot of conversations about reverse commutes and some of those types of things. So I think you'll hear about a lot of things, conversations along those lines in this upcoming workshop, but I can see if I can get presentation of the last thing I got out to you.
Okay, that would be helpful. I think it's coming up on the third of December, so.
Yeah, if I forget, send me an email.
Sounds good. Thank you, Deb.
I was just going to use props. So the sign behind me says, Chief Task of the Best Small Town in Minnesota. And for me, I, I appreciate Councilmember Wong and his, his attention to detail of numbers, but for, to me, the importance in, under having you understand that Southwest Metro plays a part in that. People see that as a community builder. They see that as a way to get to the arboretum for a light show, to a state tournament game. And, and that's a value that I truly think if gets lost and gets consolidated, the metro transit is lost. Because it's purely, you know, there's things if you look purely on, does it make sense for dollar income wise? If some of those decisions are different. So like I said, that's, that's to me is what, what I wanted to express the importance of is is that it's not just a bus service. It's not just also, it is part of Chaska as a community. And people look to it to, to be the best small town in Minnesota. And, and it's, and it's important that we hold that and support that.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments. And I will tell you, like, my, my entire time on the council is I've made sure that I've maintained relationships with Southwesterns and M V T A, not only because they're, you know, because they're in my district too. And, you know, those things matter. Like when you look at the M V T A, um, four ninety six, four ninety five line that goes from the mall to Shakopee. So I live in Shakopee. And that was an effort that was really driven by local business leaders and I really helped to move that along because I thought it was important for the community. So I understand what you're saying. And so I definitely appreciate that. And, and I will be very keenly interested as well, what we, what comes out of this Blue Ribbon Committee at the end of the day. I'm, I'm curious as well.
All right, anyone else? Otherwise, I, I just want to echo, I, I, I think you could see the, the passion that we have for Southwest Transit and what it means to our community, that it is huge. You know, as I sit on the tab with you, you know, we're, we're fighting, you know, inner cities are fighting road expansions that we shouldn't have that, we should be using buses. But, you know, we just have Southwest Transit and I, I'm like, Mike, I am concerned about funding. I'm seeing things and hearing things that, that I, I don't know how and when we'll, we'll get an answer for that. And they're too important for us to have. And scares me if, if the idea is for Met Council to take over. Because I think that was tried initially and it wasn't very, wasn't a very efficient system. And it wasn't a system that anybody utilized to any effect that, and then they stopped. And then I believe, I don't know the history totally, but I believe then that's where Southwest Transit came in and, and offered the services for our community and they are, that is like, like Councilmember Gra said, it's part of, it's part of our community is who they are and what they are. I mean, Southwest Transit is no different than a city utility vehicle. You know, they're just, you see it and you just assume that it's part of the community. So just know that, that, that I, I, I think you heard it from most of the council already, that, that's really how we feel. And the concern is about, about losing that funding. And having the Met Council take over the, the opt outs as we move into the future. And that's certainly you know, and I'm sure that this is, and, and I believe that it's happened before and I'm, I'm sure these things are out there. But I just want you to know that we're pretty passionate about it. And I think maybe the next time we should probably have this as a work session as well. And we have that opportunity to dive, you know, we got pretty deep into things now. I'm sure there's people sitting at home scratching their head and going, what's going on? But it's certainly things that it was some conversations that we needed to have. And Deb, I greatly appreciate you joining us and, and being able to do that. So.
It's my pleasure and anytime. And I know we talked transit tonight. But Met Council, we do do a bunch of other things. And, you know, to me, it's, they said I represent a lot of different areas. But I always think that a lot of my work gets done with the cities. And with not being able to get out and about as much this last year has been, I've missed it very much. So, but, so if we get a chance to do this again, if there's other topics, just let me know and I'd be happy to come out again.
Perfect. All right. Thanks, Deb. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
See ya. Bye. All right. Uh, is there anyone else that's on here that's here for visitor presentation? And then I don't think by looking at what I see here, but then Kevin, is there anybody in queue?
Yeah, no, it doesn't look like there's anyone for visitor presentation.
Okay. All right. So then we are done with visitor presentation. And we will move on to approving the previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I entertain a motion to approve previous meeting minutes.
Removed by Hatfield.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield. Second by Wind Shuttle. Discussion. Hearing done. Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Hubbard.
Hi.
Councilmember Gra.
Hi.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Mayor Wind Shuttle, yes, passes five all. All right, that moves us on to item number eight, which are consent items. Again, these are items that are, need to be approved, but not necessarily a conversation, but any of them can be discussed at any time. So again, I will put it out there. If anyone has a comment or question. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve consent.
So moved by Wong.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second by Hatfield.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing done. Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard Hatfield, sorry.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong. Mayor Wind Shuttle, yes, passes five all. Who's on the consent items? First item I have up is East Chaska Creek Restoration Project. I'm not sure who's handling that one, Matt or Nate.
Why, these are consent items.
You.
Oops, sorry. I, yep, 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 yep. Our numbers have shifted because we added something. So we're on item number nine, action items. So number nine is adopting resolution twenty twenty dash eighty seven, authorizing letter of intent partnership between City of Chaska Arts Consortium of Carver County, leasing the community center space.
Uh, Mayor Councilman, I'm going to turn this one over to Marshall Grange. In, in essence, what we're doing is trying to work with the Arts Consortium of Carver County to create a benefit to both the City of Chaska and our committee center and to the Arts Consortium to bring them together to try to expand their program and expand our program at the same time. So I'll turn it over to Marshall, who's worked on this. To explain it. And we also have Cindy Anderson from the Carver County Arts Consortium on the line as well.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to present this opportunity before you tonight. So like you saw in your packet, this is a, a letter of intent that really is intended to sort of lay out the major components of a formal partnership that we would like to establish at the community center with the Arts Consortium of Carver County. And so in that letter of intent, it did provide a lot of background information regarding the Arts Consortium of Carver County. They were established back in two thousand nine as a five oh one C three nonprofit. Really to bring together the variety of talented artists throughout Carver County and establish a way for them to, you know, communicate and come together and create more awareness throughout the, the, the county. And they've done a lot of amazing work since they established and have created a variety of different arts programs throughout the county. And then it was in two thousand eighteen where they opened up their first art center in the, on the Noterman Building over in Victoria. And that was a three year lease. And, you know, my understanding is, I've, I've actually been there. I visited it. It's a really cool art space. I just don't think it was an ideal location for them. And so it was sort of an opportunity towards the end of their lease coming up here, the end of their term. For them to explore some other options of which they came to us and wanted to see what it might look like at the community center. So we've had quite a few discussions together. Brought this to the park board a couple, two to three months ago, to just propose the idea and get some feedback. You know, and I think there's just a lot of excitement about what this partnership could bring to the, not only the community center, but the entire community. So what this would really look like is repurposing the, the former cafeteria space at the community center. And that would ultimately become a retail space for the consortium. And so this is where the variety of artists would display their items and have them for sale. And so it would be the Arts Consortium's volunteers that would staff that retail space for, for some established hours during the community center hours. And, and so that being more of a dedicated space along with a storage space that would be adjacent to the, the cafeteria, we see that be part of that formal relationship would be through a lease agreement. And so that lease agreement would account for the dedicated retail space along with that storage space. And then built into it, they would also have use of the art exhibit gallery at the community center. And so they would, they would actually program And so they would, they would actually program that space. Oftentimes they do six-week themed exhibits. And so our staff would actually be a, a part of developing what those themes would look like over the course of the year. But built into it, we would also maintain up to 12 weeks where the, the city would have some discretion on what type of art exhibits to be displayed in that space could be. We'd also be providing them some use of the Park and Recreation Conference Room. And that's really to accommodate their monthly board meetings at our facility. And so those would be the, the primary components that would be part of a lease agreement that we would establish. And the, the, the goal of that would be for it to commence beginning in January of 2021, and it would be a three-year term. And the way the financials would work with that lease arrangement is we've established a monthly base rate that provides some a percent increase each year over the course of those three years. But also we would be looking at, on a monthly basis, splitting their net profits 50%. And if that amount were to be greater than the established leased scheduled payment, the consortium would then owe the city that greater amount. So really what that does, in my opinion, is it builds in some incentive for this to be a true partnership and for we as staff in the city, you know, to try to generate as much sales as we can for the consortium within that retail space. The second component of this partnership I see is really through a memorandum of understanding regarding partnership on arts programming. So this is where we could really utilize all the other multi-use spaces within the community center, including the, the theater that's there. And it could even involve other spaces throughout the city, the event center at the Curling and Event Center, and also out in our parks during the warm weather months. And so this idea of partnering around programming lays out what each entity would provide throughout that programming process. And really the, the primary things that the city would be providing would be the spaces. It would provide the marketing throughout the variety of our different platforms to market programs. We would be putting, inputting all of the programs into our online registration software system. And so it would be the Park and Recreation staff that would take in all of the online registrations, but also take registrations from those that may come in person or call over the phone. So essentially we'd be handling a lot of the incoming financials. And then we would in turn provide reports back to the consortium that would provide a registration information and the financials that go along with the programs that we're partnering on. And then it would be our staff that would be key players in the setup and takedown of those variety of programs as well. And then on the other side, the consortium would really be bringing the expertise. So utilizing, you know, the variety of their talented artists to carry out the programs. They would help put together some of the marketing materials for us to promote those programs. You know, and then they would also be marketing those programs on their end as well. And so really that's what we would each be bringing to the table to plan and execute a variety of arts programming and events to the community. And then it would be set up where we would be splitting the revenues we would receive from register for programs 50% each way. So that's really kind of the highlights of how we see this partnership working. And, you know, once again, I just reiterate that we're really excited about what this partnership can bring. I think it will really bring a, an emphasis on the arts to kind of that next level to the community center and really take advantage of the great spaces that were designated and designed for the arts at the community center already. So with that, like Matt said, Cindy Anderson is here with us too. She's the, the president of the Board of Directors and talented artist herself. So we'd open it up from here if you, any questions you have. But really we're looking for, you know, feedback or direction to then, you know, factor that into a formal lease agreement to account for the dedicated space and then a memorandum of understanding to account for the partnership on programming going forward.
I had a question and maybe it's for Cindy. The consortium, is it, is it a membership-driven thing? Like, do people pay a membership fee to be a part of it?
Yes, the consortium is based on memberships, sponsorships, and any type of gift sales that we have now during the gift show and holiday shows.
So like as an artisan, let's say you produce jewelry and you want to sell that. Do they get to like pick their markup and then they put it over there? You know, you talk about net sales and here I'm just, I'm curious how that all pans out if you have a lot of different people, you know, that are artisans in this consortium together.
Good question. The, let's take your example. If you were a jeweler and you wanted to show your work at the art center, at the gallery or the gift shop, we do ask you to be a member and the membership for artists is $50 or for a family is 100, and then it goes incrementally up for different memberships. The items that you bring into the gift shop or show exhibit or anything like that, normally we take a 40% commission. The artist will take a 60% commission. And then during the holiday gift show, we give the artists more of their commission back so they have 70% and we take 30.
Hey, are there questions for Cindy or Marshall?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. So Cindy, I'm, how do, I guess, so all the members, are they all Carver County artists?
So a lot of the members are Carver County artists. However, you don't have to be, you don't have to live in Carver County to be part of the Arts Consortium of Carver County. So we do have regional artists within our group as well as local artists from all of the cities within Carver County.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, what percentage of those are like Chaska-based artists?
Percentages-wise, I really couldn't tell you as far as Chaska versus Waconia. We have quite a number of Chaska and Waconia, and then the outlying area, areas. Chanhassett would come in number third.
Okay. And then the last question I have is, you know, given that, you know, there's a limited floor space out there, how do you prioritize who gets what space or how much space they get?
We are very creative, so we, we work everything in and we invite you to come and experience the holiday show and the gift, gift shop the way it is set up right now. You'll find lots of wonderful local artisan work and be very impressed. Our exhibition for the member show is currently in the gallery. And then if you come into the gift shop, that moves into the holiday market and that is in the sunroom. So it, it really is impressive when you walk in the community center doors now and you, you have a lot more to see and visual, visualize.
Thank you.
You know, one thing that really stands out to me about this partnership is, well, two things. First of all, you know, our theater space, our art gallery space, you know, some of the craft rooms that we've had, even our cafeteria space have never really been fully utilized to what we want that, wanted them to be, especially as we get into the art gallery and theater space. You know, we've, you know, over the last few years, you know, we've continued to rent out the, the theater, but there's been a lot of churches that use it on, on weekends. On, not that that's a bad thing, but it's not necessarily the reason that that was built to begin with. It was to bring in artists to be able to do this. To me, a real benefit of this partnership is being able to look at, how do we bring in things like shows? You know, be able to bring in, because it's not just, you know, physical artists that are part of the Arts Consortium. There's musicians, there's book writers, there's all kinds of different artisans that, that come in that can really utilize the infrastructure that we have within the community center, probably more so than we do now. And I also think on the program side, for our residents to be able to take advantage of having people who really know what they're doing, teaching art classes or teaching classes that, that, that teach about their art form is something that it, it really takes it above and beyond the type of programming that we've been able to offer in the past. So I, to, to me, I look at those two things and really see the community benefit out of it.
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of like built-in daily participants at the community center that can really benefit. You know, with the daily activity at the lodge to provide, you know, programming for the active older adults. We run a Trucks and Trails preschool program, so I could see, you know, that being part of their curriculum. And then even working with Breakaway Academy, which is another, you know, leased tenant in our facility that runs the school. There could be some opportunity for some programming there as well.
Yeah, one more question for us, Cindy. So is the, what's the long-term plan for the Arts Consortium in terms of space? Is it to, you know, continue, does it, you know, if this works out well to stay at the community center? Or is it to eventually find a permanent home or what's the long game here?
Well, we've discussed that and long-term, if the community center space is a win-win for everyone, I think we will continue on with that process. I know art space is coming into Chaska eventually, and we'd like to be part of that area as well. So we, as a group, decided the three-year mark would be a, a nice transition if it were. And if we at that point can handle both, both areas, we would love to put our foot on that market as well.
Yeah, and that's, that's one thing that, you know, we didn't really mention as part of this is the, the potential opportunity. We've worked with the Carver County Arts Consortium as it, as it relates to City's Core West as a redevelopment site and some of the potential for some art space stuff that could be in that redevelopment project to be able to bring some energy to it. It's a natural partnership and we really view, especially with the three-year partnership and sort of looking at the likely timeline of that project. It works out really well to, to look at what things work or don't work with a partnership to be able to plan for potential future things too.
There's a, two quick things. One, Cindy and Marshall, I just appreciate you guys working together on this. I know with my time on the park board and working with you, Marshall, I've always appreciated the partnerships that we create and, and develop. And, you know, Breakaway is another good example, as you mentioned. So I just appreciate that. I think it's, it's, it definitely supports the sign behind me as I'll reference that now a second time about being the best small town in Minnesota. And, you know, creating that community gathering space, which still can occur in a time of COVID. Connected to the COVID question though, because we can't go a, a, a topic without talking about pandemic, right? In a situation where like the community center shuts down, how does that impact leased tenants? Do they shut down too?
Marshall, you want to handle this or?
Yeah, no. Good question.
I think the answer is it depends.
It sort of depends, yeah. You know, I think if, if there was still some allowance for, you know, a different type of business to be open that isn't considered a gym, you know, we would just have to figure out a way where operationally, we're still able to come in and open and close the building and maintain it and things. But we would do our best to make sure that we could provide that, that ongoing service if they're not necessarily forced to close, close down.
And we ran into that with like Alphabet Junction renting spaces that they were open, we were closed. You know, at the time, all schools were required to be distanced. But if a school wasn't required to be distanced and could be open, but community centers had to be closed, then you could probably have Breakaway be open, but not the community center. So that's where it sort of depends on what the, the actual order would be.
So Cindy, through this process earlier this year, did you stay open through the whole pandemic? Or were you shut down for a period?
We were shut down from March, well, we shut down March and April. And then towards the middle to the end of May, we opened up again, but it was very, very slow. And then it didn't really, well, we could have been closed in May. I have to look. I'm sorry. But we did shut down.
No, no, I was just more curious of what, what happened in the facility that you're in, so.
Yeah, and at that point, they shut everything down. I know that right now state mandates are different for retail space versus other spaces. So we are following all the state mandates for COVID, COVID. And we also have all the prerequisites, PPE and everything signs. So we're trying to follow everything that we possibly can to meet any standards within the community center and within the state.
Okay. Because the only, the, the concern that I initially had when, when we, first time we talked about this was, you know, what, what are going to be the hours? I, I just would hate to see that that has the gate closed all the time and people aren't there. But it sounds like that there's, that you have plenty of staff to be able to work that and keep that open. Because that, I mean, we want the community center to be inviting, inviting and welcoming. And if the gates only open, say Saturdays and Sundays for some, you know, whatever, that, to me, that's not inviting and open. So that was my concern that I had as we moved into this partnership, that the hours would have the gates open and the doors opened. Because, you know, that's not only a nice space to put stuff. People like to go back there and just look out over the valley and things like that too. So I, I don't want to lose that space. I, I mean, I get it that you're not open at six in the morning and I understand that. But just that we have reasonable hours that those, that, that, those spaces are open.
Are you talking about the sunroom in particular?
Well, I'm talking where you're going to be in the old cafeteria that'll be locked down. But then you're going to be in the sunroom and I assume then the door, what I'll call to the west end of that, then would be locked up. And those spots would not be available to the public.
Yeah, the sunroom would just be temporary.
Right.
The sunroom's just during their holiday sale. The cafeteria would be during the whole year.
Okay.
Correct.
I got it.
So I know you're a member of, I'm assuming of Southwest Chamber, because I know you're a member of the Waconia Chamber. I think the, kind of the neat thing is just some of the events that they host there and participating, like in, you know, mentioned in the paperwork, the Art Wanderer. I think about an event like that and how it brings people all around Carver County to visit different spaces and how this could be a real benefit to the community center to bring people from other areas, even outside of Carver County that come to visit like an event like the Art Wanderer and bring them in to our community center, which, you know, they normally wouldn't go into for, for something if not that. So that's great.
Great. Definitely a, a bonus to have.
I don't really have any questions, but I do think it's exciting. I don't, I saw pictures either today or yesterday, not sure who posted them, but it was on social media. And it looked really cool and we And we have, we have a shop small coming up next Saturday or the Saturday after some Saturday soon. So I think that that opportunity is really nice to have in the city too, to go shop some local artisans and support that way, especially through the pandemic. I'm really excited about it and the pictures looked awesome, so pretty excited to get up there. And I hope all of Chaska and our 1.2 million listeners will also go. So I'm excited about it.
Hey, hey, that's my life.
We're excited too.
Sorry, Mark stole it.
I'll let you use it. All right, any more questions for Marshall or Cindy? But so, so you, you already are occupied that space, actually, then I take it?
We are, we are. We started with the member show and that exhibition started in October. And then November, the holiday show began in the sunroom area. And the gift shop was set up along with the holiday show. So the holiday market is large. And if you haven't been there yet, be sure to be there because it is really impressive. We have a lot of wonderful artists in Carver County that, that their work is really worth seeing.
Just as a quick comment, you know, I had the opportunity to see it. It wasn't open at the time I was there. But it just like seeing everything on display, it was all very neatly organized and just out there. Really, you can kind of sense that sense of life in those spaces that otherwise really kind of felt really empty, right? Because the cafeteria was just a bunch of tables and some vending machines. And with like the shot there, you can kind of sense that when there's a few people in there, it's kind of, there's like a new vibrance to it. And I think that's really one of the things that's really important that we're trying to add to the community center, that sense of life, that sense of energy. And I think something like that will be a great, you know, kind of a really great compliment to what's in the community center.
Great, thank you. And we are, Mark, I, I didn't even clarify our hours, but our hours are 11:00 in the morning until 7:00 at night. And right now, that is Monday through Friday, Saturdays, we're open from 9:00 until 4:00 when the community center closes. So we're experimenting with those hours and if we need to adjust, we can adjust.
Perfect, thanks. You gotta be kind of getting a little nervous here, because you already moved in there. What if we vote this down?
Well, then we move up.
We just rented this space to him now.
We're on temporary now.
You never know how this council will go. It could go any direction.
Try before you buy.
That's true.
All right, any, any more questions? If not, I, I guess I would just, it, it sounds like it might squeak by on a pass here, but we, we need to, I need to know your thoughts on adopting Resolution 2020, which is a partnership with Chaska Arts Consortium.
We'll approve it.
Oh, somebody did. All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second by Hatfield.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield, discussion. I think we had a good, healthy discussion on that. So with that, Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Windshuttle. Aye, passes 5-0. Thanks for being with us, Cindy. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. And I just, I want to, on beh, on behalf of the Board of Directors and the Arts Consortium, I want to thank the City of Chaska and the Parks and Rec Board and the City Council, all of you for having, having the confidence to take place with our partnership and to make our county the best county and Chaska the best small town in Minnesota.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor and Council.
All right, bye bye.
All right, we move on to 9B Humans Right, Human Rights Commission Strategic Plan. Nate, I assume?
Yeah, yep, go ahead, Nate.
All right, Mayor and Councilmembers, this is an effort that started really back, I would say in 2019, when the hu, when the City Council identified in its strategic plan the goal to, you know, focus on the Human Rights Commission and really rethink what, you know, what it's doing to serve the community. But then more recently, kicked off, I guess I would say, in August of this year, when we had a joint work session with the City Council and the Human Rights Commission to talk about that exactly. What is, what is the role for the Human Rights Commission? What should they be doing and how can they best serve the community? Since then, based on that groundwork that was laid, the Human Rights Commission in a couple of its meetings and also by establishing a subcommittee, which has met on multiple occasions with city staff, has come up with a strategic plan, which is being presented to you tonight and is attached to this agenda item. And so within that, what, what they're attempting to do and what the strategic plan is doing is to lay out, you know, an agreed vision for the, for the Human Rights Commission. And also some goals and then else, and implementation steps that the Human Rights Commission believes that would, that they want to be working on here towards that vision, with it really trying to be in line with the council's goals as they expressed them in the, in the strategic plan back in 2019. And so if you read the strategic plan, it does mention that in the council strategic plan, they want, they identified to have a 20, in 2025, Chaska is a welcoming, respectful, engaging and inclusive community. And so what the Human Rights Commission wanted to do is really build off of that and, and bring some more focus and specifics to it with the plan. I think an important thing to understand here is that the plan's intent is to be aspirational. It's not prescriptive. I think the idea here is that we're setting some larger goals that establishes a shared vision that the Human Rights Commission can have some confidence in as they move forward, that if they're moving those things forward, that the council has support for that and that they're doing the things that the council is seeking them to do. And so the, the objective here is that how it's used is the Human Rights Commission is reviewing this plan on a regular basis. I think we would start out with annually to just retouch base with what it says and see if there are things that have been accomplished. You know, maybe you need to identify the next step, or if there are things that as time has changed and more information is known, maybe have become less relevant, you want to dust those things off and and see what the, what the other, you know, what, what would make more sense. So to start out, the strategic plan is identifying four major goals or areas that the Human Rights Commission views would really be areas for focus. That would be to proactively partner and engage with community members and groups, to advise staff and council, to promote community engagement and education. And then to continue ongoing core efforts, which are things that the Human Rights Commission has been doing for a number of years now, including MLK Breakfast, the River City Days booth and annual Human Rights Award. Human Rights Commission felt strongly that they don't want to lose sight of those things that are, you know, have been ongoing for some time and have a lot of community support behind them. I think among these, maybe one of the newer is the advise staff and council piece. Ordinance does state that the Human Rights Commission should advise council, but I think what we're trying to do here is, is deepen that role a little bit by partnering more intentionally with staff. And so what we've done most recently to try and work on that is to bring Parks and Rec staff and also PD staff into a closer engagement with the Human Rights Commission. I think most concrete is that we do have a couple of the Parks and Rec staff actively working with the Human Rights Commission presently on its MLK breakfast planning. And that has been, I think, very beneficial is that those staff have brought some great ideas to the table and also abilities to move forward and implement some things. But we want to grow on that. I think there's a lot of things that the Parks and Rec Department is looking to do to expand its reach, expand its appeal across different groups within our community population. And that is the same for the Police Department. I think the opportunity that both of those departments see with the Human Rights Commission is that they can be a very useful sounding board to bring new ideas to, hear the Human Rights Commission's feedback. And then just have that broader perspective to, to build into their implementation of, of these things. There's not a lot of specifics around that right now, but that's intentional. I think the, the idea here is that, you know, staff are exploring this relationship that they're bringing things to the Human Rights Commission. Human Rights Commission can also bring ideas to those groups and, and, you know, they can be, they can be built upon. I also don't think that it's necessarily limited to a relationship with the Parks and Rec Department and the PD, but those are the two that have the most direct public relations component to them, I would say today. So that makes sense to start there and we can grow, we can grow that as it makes sense and as, as the opportunities arise. So with that, I guess what we're asking for tonight is the Human Rights Commission has approved this plan as a group unanimously. What they would like now is for the council to consider also approving the plan. And I think the goal here is that with your approval, the Human Rights Commission can feel confident that what they've come up with here is in line with your goals and your, your thoughts on what the Human Rights Commission is best situated to be doing. So I guess I'd open it up for any questions or comments. I do, we do have Sarah Carlson here tonight. She was a member of the Subcommittee and she's also on the Human Rights Commission that put this together. The other two members of the, of the Subcommittee, Kaylee Haga, was not able to attend tonight. She had a last minute thing come up that she needed to attend to. And then Seth Spreadberry, I think, was intending to join, but I don't see his name here, so I'm not sure that he was able to join. Mark, I think you're talking, but you're on mute.
So I was looking at the, the proactively partner, engage with community members and groups. Implementation, it says seek boards, work groups and volunteer opportunity to participate in as each. What, what exactly is that meaning?
Yeah, so one of the ways that, one of the things the Human Rights Commission talked a lot about is wanting to, I guess, build its recognition or its presence in the community, maybe presence is the better word, and, and find ways to become, I guess, more involved in it, in integrated into, you know, other things that are going on beyond just the walls of the council chamber. And so one way that has been talked about is maybe it would make sense similar to how the council gets involved in different boards, like Councilmember Wong is an example, is a board member of the Southwest Metro, Southwest Transit Board. It might make sense for the Human Rights Commission just to explore those potential partnerships. And maybe it makes sense for a Human Rights Commission member to serve in that capacity for another group, you know, sort of representing the Human Rights Commission in that way. I think it's also broader than that. We talked a lot about just volunteering, so like food distribution events and making sure that the Human Rights Commission is, is aware of those and that they can participate in those as they make sense. Or other activities that maybe the PD, as an example, are doing for outreach activities, like partnering with Julie Jankie to help her out with some of the things that she does. So there's that definition around this yet. I think it's going to be something that's intended for more discussion. But that's kind of the, the idea that, that they're putting forward there.
That helps clarify, so thanks on that.
Yeah.
Council, any, anyone else have, have questions, I, comments?
Not a question, but com, as a comment, I mean, overall, I like the direction. It's consistent with a lot of the things we had in our work session. And, you know, I think that it's important for the human rights to be, have that, you know, greater visibility, that greater engagement. And they can certainly act as a really positive conduit between the community and us to, for, be able to connect with parts of the community that we may not hear from on a normal day to day basis.
I, I think it's a, I think also, I agree with you, it's a great, great place to start. And, you know, it was one of those that we've kind of struggled with. How do we move forward and, and utilize the HRC more than we do? And, you know, it's just been one of those. And I, I think now that we, at least now we have a foundation, we can start building on it. Like I said, I'm sure not all this is going to happen overnight, but it's something to start moving and working forward on.
Yeah, I'd echo those thoughts. I, I thought it was concisely put together, specific where it needed to be and, and, you know, deliberately left vague to be determined more information later, which I think is appreciative. And I just, I just go back to kind of that, our conversation we had, I don't even know how many months ago. I know I was still in my basement and, and in my finished basement. But just the importance of getting people together and communicating and kind of norming on some ideas. You know, I really, I, I, I'm not surprised at the end result, because I, I trust the group of individuals that are on that committee. And I, I like where we're at. And, you know, I actually would even throw out the idea, like, you know, would this, some of this stuff make sense as a strategic plan process, not what's on their strategic plan, but strategic plan process as it relates to maybe some of our other commissions? You know, planning commission is pretty straightforward. I don't think there's anyone that has any concerns of what they're doing. Or what, they don't know what they're doing or that type of confusion. But like even like Park Board, you know, it, it would be useful to kind of have a strategic vision plan, because I think every once in a while, like this demonstrates, it is good just to get members of that group to get together and say, okay, what is our purpose? Because we do these meetings, we meet, we talk about a lot of things. You know, for me, it's always been a guiding principle, kind of going like for the council is like the values is kind of our strategic plan, right, to some degree. And, and so, you know, I throw that out, like, that I, idea out to staff too and the other council members. And if there'd be some use maybe for leveraging kind of what we learned through this process with the Human Rights Commission, maybe for some of those other commissions that, you know, sometimes maybe, maybe desire some focus at times too.
Anyone else?
I'll chime in. I, yeah, I really thought that the strategic plan kind of hit the nail on the head from what we had discussed during our, our co, co-op work session. You know, one of the questions that, in the Herald with the candidate questions was, how do you build a more inclusive community? And I honestly think that utilizing what we already have in place with our Human Rights Commission and incorporating robust recreational programming will help kind of bring those layers in. So it was nice to see the collaboration between the, you know, Parks and Rec and the Police Department, along with the Human Rights Commission, to kind of help educate and provide that programming and outreach to our community members. I think that that's a great benefit. So I was impressed and I look forward to seeing what the future holds.
Yeah, I'll just echo, you know, most of what everyone else said. I think it's good that we have this in place. And I think it's really done really well, so that we have a, a good guide going forward. And I hope we continue to look at it. One thing I kind of thought about was, as I read through it again, in the council packet is just how it can, and only evolve from here into greater things. I think about, you know, right now it's Park and Recs and police we're looking at. But, you know, at times our public utilities are a human rights topic as well. Think how we serve in all areas in the city. So I think it, it can evolve as we continue to look at it as well. So, but I think I'm really excited about it. I'm glad we got to, I know COVID kind of put a, a damper on it in the beginning of the year, but I'm glad we finally are here and have arrived at a good strategy, so.
Okay, all right, anyone else? Sarah, did you have any comments before we go ahead and vote? You're muted again. There you go.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you to each of you who helped work with the Human Rights Commission on developing this plan. I think the dialogue, the collaboration that we had back in August, the subsequent meetings, the reviewing of the strategic plan. I, I just, I'm confident that this will help us move forward in 2021 and, and years to come. So thank you for taking time out of your schedules to meet with the Human Rights Commission. And we certainly look forward to adding to the best small town in Adding to the best small town in. Minnesota.
It's a good team tonight.
It is.
All right, if there are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the Human Rights Strategic Plan.
So moved by Hubbard.
Motion by Hubbard, Councilmember Hubbard, second by. Okay, I saw, I saw, I think my council member Wong was, so I have a motion by council member Hubbard, second by council member Wong, right? All right, discussion. Hearing then, Councilmember Hatfield. Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Hubbard. Councilmember Gra. And councilman or Mayor Winchell, I, so passes five oh. All right, thanks Sarah for being on, appreciate it. All right, we move to nine C, adopt resolution twenty twenty dash eighty eight, expansion of accessory structure.
Mayor, Councilmember, this is an item coming back from the Planning Commission. This is in relation to a property at two twenty Elm Street North. We do have the owner of the property, Blake Cronie on Zoom here. And the specific request is a variance request for his accessory structure, his garage. To be able to add a second story onto that, which in its current configuration would. Exceed height requirements and. Expand a non-conforming use. So Kevin Ringwald is here to present this item. Talk about the the discussion at the the Planning Commission, subs and conversations that. We've had with Mr. Crony since.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna share my screen. I can see something that's small. There we go. Tonight we have a variance request, two of them as Matt mentioned for home at two twenty Elm Street North. The property is located generally at the southeast corner of that intersection. Right, you can see highlighted here, the home is on the west side. The existing accessory structure is on the east adjacent to the alley. The property in this area is owned medium density residential R two. As you can tell by the photo, it's downtown. It's about eighty five hundred square feet in size. The detached garage is about nine hundred and eighty six square feet and is approximately thirteen feet high currently. The detached garage does not meet the accessory structure setback. Five feet is required from the rear and the side. The interior side, currently it's point four feet from the rear lot line and four point six feet. From the side interior. Therefore, the existing detached garage is considered a non-conforming use or structure, excuse me. Here's a certificate of survey kind of showing the property and showing the setbacks and the general size. The request is a two part. One is to exceed fifteen fifteen feet in height. What they're requesting is a variance from section nine point two two eight. To be able to go up to fifteen point eight feet in height. The second piece is to expand a non-conforming structure, which is a variance from section two four point one point two. Basically, which says that if you're, you can't alter or enlarge or a non-conforming structure. Basically, what they would like to do is to build. As Matt mentioned, improve the garage in a way that they can get some workspace above. The existing garage, the westerly portion of that. They would stay within the existing building footprint. In doing so, would also, as I said earlier, kind of increase the height from. Where it is now about thirteen to about fifteen point eight feet. Generally summarizing, we've attached all of the. Information from the applicant and the planning commission, but. They basically need some workspace due to family issues with COVID and needing more workspace. At home. The roof needs some work. And the neighboring property isn't meeting the setbacks on itself property line as well. But I think the big one really is that they're in need of some additional workspace at home is the primary. Driver for this request.
Kevin, if I may. Can you back up?
Sure, I think.
Well, no, I just meant to the last slide.
There we go, sorry.
It says, it says here, one accessory building shall not exceed seven hundred and sixty eight square feet. And lots of seven of seven seventy two hundred square feet.
Right. The, what we do is we all, they are, they're allowed additional square footage. And we do allow people to combine that into a single structure rather than having two structures.
Okay, I I I saw that and it confused me because it's way over now and if you add on to that, I would not.
Okay, right. If you had a garage and a storage shed, we'd let you combine those square footages. It does, you don't get another one. We just let people accumulate it and figure out what's best on their property in terms of accessory square footage.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. This is elevations from the applicant, kind of showing the the four sides, kind of showing the alley. Is to the, if you can see my cursor on the upper right image, the alley is adjacent. To this side of the structure. And so over kind of the. A portion of the building is just really being expanded on the west side. And you can see it in the lower right from the house. From the alley in the lower left and the upper left is from the adjacent property. Kind of a floor plan. Here's the existing. Building. And then kind of down below, I tried to kind of match these up as best I could to show approximately how. The up, the new upper would sit over the existing lower portion. Which would provide them some office space that they need in their in their home. One of the issues that came up was the former Smurka residence over on Second Street. This was a historic property or is a historic property and kind of goes through that review. They did. Get above the fifteen foot height requirement in terms of a variance request. But it was really from a historic perspective and matching in with the architectural compatibility of that structure. It really didn't, that Smurka residence, since they were building a new garage. Really didn't deal with the non-conformity issue of the structure. They were building a new garage. It met all the setbacks and so the Smurka residents did. Get a variance to go above fifteen feet, up to seventeen. But it was really after the HPC reviewed it and the Planning Commission reviewed it. To figure out from a historic perspective, which does allow and afford. Some additional exceptions to the code and so. That that is one that is out there and we just wanted to bring that up. For a matter of the record. This is pretty standard, basic questions that we ask with any variance requests. This pretty much comes out of the state code. State statute, excuse me, in terms of what's. Required. The. From a undue hardship perspective. You know, this is really where a lot of this comes from is, you know, in terms of meaning the property in question cannot be put to a reasonable use. If used under conditions allowed under the official controls, which is their zoning setback, zoning ordinance, excuse me. Most, this property does have a house. Does have an accessory garage and additional space. The property is regular, is rectangular in shape, relatively flat. It isn't. The property is not. Influenced to a great extent. You know, that any other property in that area doesn't have. The same issues or limitations or possibilities. The Planning Commission made a recommendation back in October. To deny the request to exceed the height requirements for the accessory structure. And to expand a non-conforming structure based on various findings of fact. That motion passed unanimously by all nine members of the Planning Commission. As it relates to this request tonight. We would find that the Cronie property can be put to reasonable use under the current regulations and setbacks. Property currently has a home accessory building on the property. There are unique, no unique. Physical constraints on the property which would otherwise make the property unusable. An accessory building exceeding the maximum height allowed by the zoning ordinance would set a negative precedent and thus alter the essential character of the area. There are alternatives to this variance. The variance would not improve. An existing non-conforming condition, rather, it would make that condition worse. The detached garage does not meet the setbacks. The proposed height for the garage would make the non-conformity larger. These setbacks were enacted to protect public safety and. The permanent maintenance of this non-conformity through this variance would be contrary to those regulations. And the variance is kind of following that is contrary to the intent and purpose of the plan and the zoning ordinance by not meeting. Those setbacks. What we're asking the council to do is to motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash eighty eight, denying the variance request. To exceed the height requirement for accessory structures and. For their request to expand a non-conforming structure basic, based on the findings of fact listed in the resolution. I'd be glad. To answer any questions. I know the applicant is here as well.
Hey Kevin, just a question. He could, they, the homeowner could. I guess fix, repair maybe is a better word, the existing structure as is, which wouldn't. Because they're not expanding the property, it wouldn't be in violation of that or need a variance at that point. If he was just fixing up what's currently there.
You you are allowed to do normal routine maintenance on the property. But when it comes to making improvements and the like. That that's kind of where, you know, that line is drawn and, you know, we do have a number of non-conforming structures. Things out there, non-conforming signs in downtown, lots of non-conformity. But over time, you're trying to bring those things into conformity. You know, granted that, you know, as a city, we're here for a long time and some of those. Trying to allow people to utilize those buildings to their full. Value before they move on. So basically. You know, allowing them to depreciate that building over a long period of time, which really then allows and makes it easier to deal with it. You know, again, whether you're talking about signs in downtowns, we're always dealing with this. You know, that, oh, why can't I have that? Well, you know, the rules have changed and here here's where we're at, but. In this instance, the non-conformity is a major driver of what's happening. On this property and and with this recommendation and. And so with that, you know, we're feeling and the planning commission believes that the recommendation should be for denial.
Because if I understand correctly, the current state of that structure does need to be repaired, right? I think it has some rough failure. I I believe and and so there there's a desire to fix that and then on top of that was this conversation about the. Expansion, is that a correct understanding?
That that's my understanding of it as well as that the applicant, you know, feels that the the roof is. Aged and you can look at it from the outside. I haven't been inside the garage to see it, but from the outside, it would. Be reasonable to assume that there are things that need maintenance, you know, on a building of that age. So that seems reasonable, you know, and 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 is perfectly allowable to. Do normal and routine maintenance on non-conforming structure.
Routine maintenance or what's the border of routine maintenance?
Things that don't change the structural integrity of the building, you know, that. You know, I think that changing the roof out, that would be okay. We've allowed people to do that because that keeps the building weather tight. You know, it, I think stripping the building down completely and starting over then, you know, that's getting there. We try and work with. Owners to. You know, try and strike a balance there, you know, we, we have a relatively generous approach in that. Other cities, maybe not so much. And so it. Over time, we've worked with properties and tried to develop a consistent approach. Through the building inspection department and through the planner, Liz in this case, to to. Look at a property and develop what would be reasonable and routine maintenance.
So someone wanted to change siding or something like that?
Well, you want to paint it, you want to fix a board, you know, all of those things, you know, replace a door. Those, you know, a window breaks, we're not going to make you tear down a building because your kid hit a baseball through the window, right? I mean. That's not what we do. You know, and that's just routine maintenance and, you know, and that's what we allow to continue. And just kind of take the long. The longer term view, you know, some cities might have a shorter window on what they do and say, you know, we want that non-conforming use. Eliminated sooner, you know, we understand and like I said, we want to make sure that the owner fully depreciates the building. And can move forward.
So what if there's like a lightning strike in the building or something?
Damage beyond fifty percent, then then that's. Going to be problematic for the property owner. They would have to, the new building that they would build. Would need to meet the setbacks and the code, the current code.
Less than fifty percent, you know, someone like just drove their car into the side of it and took it out and blew it down the alley or something. That's like, well.
I think Mr. Cronie's experienced that with, I think, a garbage truck, he said. I I I might be wrong. I I know something. I I remember him saying something had already accomplished that, but you could argue that kind of gets at the proximity issue. As well, but that was replaced, I believe, and fixed and, no, not yet. No, okay, well, he, I'll let break, I'll let Blake tell the story because he he lived it, so. I I won't try and goof it up too much.
Hey, thanks.
I guess my concern was that the the precedent that it sets. And we ran into this a couple of meetings ago where we were dealing with the previous council that made a decision. That was outside of. What we had set and and we had to kind of deal with that and ultimately it it was uncomfortable and. I guess my concern is doing that again to ourselves or a future council and setting a precedent where we. You know, had we allowed this once, we allow it again and. I mean, I live downtown, I have an attached garage. When I bought my house, they said, don't touch that or you won't get to keep it. So I know that if I wanted to do anything to that old structure, it would be a lot different and because it's. Not all we, I don't think it's even all the way on my property. It was grandfathered in, so I I understand, but I also, like I said. You know, that precedent and having to deal with it in the future, every, all of a sudden, all of the town wanted to add it. Add to their detached garages would be a problem. So I guess that that's my biggest concern. Is that precedent.
And it's striking a balance, right, between allowing people to. Invest in their property and then, you know, because this just isn't downtown, you know, I mean, your decisions. Have implications because non-conformities exist beyond downtown. It's just not a downtown issue. There's certainly probably more of them there just because downtown's been there longer. But there are non-conformities. Throughout the city and so we we do need to be careful there and. you know, I think from a safety perspective, thinking about setbacks between properties and the like, I mean, trying to make sure that we maintain that and don't enhance it and make those issues worse from a setback perspective. You know, are, are valuable from a staff perspective.
One thing that we talked about from a staff perspective is, as I look at this, the biggest issue here is the non-conformity. You know, the height issue, you know, we've actually had this discussion from a staff perspective in, especially about downtown, because there is a lot of different structures and, and, you know, some homes have different pitches roofs than others. And, you know, we've had the discussion about, you know, it might make some sense for us from a height perspective or things like that to be able to, to develop some flexibility in our ordinance where we might say, well, you know, if if a roof is a foot more, a foot higher, but it meets the pitch of the, of the main structure's roof, well, then that probably makes sense. You know, to, to create some criteria around that. I think if this was just a height issue, it'd probably be a different type of issue. I think the thing that makes this a, a more complex issue is the fact that it's a non-conforming use.
Just to clarify on kind of what council member Hatfield said, is there any liability to the city? I believe, I mean, I think the answer is yes, but if we approve this variance and someone else comes on the road and, and, you know, my state statute and doesn't agree that we, with our decision of undue hardship, there is a liability created from the state that statute correct, if my understanding, or someone else could say, I don't, you're denying me, you know, he knows someone and, you know, that kind of a conversation it's had versus kind of, and that's kind of why the state statue exists, correct?
Correct. I mean, it's really just a due process issue. You know, that, are we treating people fairly? And if, you know, a, a better example would be if you had two properties that are identical in terms of their requests and one had lots of neighbors in favor of it and you approved it and another one didn't have any neighbors in favor of it. And you denied it, you'd be into a due process issue.
I think that's the bigger issue here is it's not, it's not the actual decision of the property owner. It's that future decision that you might make with a similar property. And if you made a different decision, that's, that's where I think that due process would be an issue.
Or conversely, if you denied this and somebody came in with something similar and you approved it, you know, you'd have a due process issue as well. And so consistency and trying to approach things consistently is something that we try and do very much. And if we vary from that, you know, to have very, very strong reasons for doing that. And in this instance, moving that garage, even though it costs more to do that, if that's, if they need that space and really want that space, that's really what would need to happen. You know, and then we can talk about the heights thing and stuff, but I, I would agree with Matt. The non-conformity and the structure setback to me is the major issue in this request and one that we need to be thoughtful about.
Hey Kevin, one other question. Oh. So is, are there other structures like this that were grandfathered in that basically have a similar setback issue? You know, where like.
They're not really grandfathered. They're just non-conforming structures. Yeah, we, you, you could drive through downtown and find a fair amount of buildings, garages that don't meet the setback. Like I said, it, you know, that's not, that wouldn't be uncommon because the rules change over time. You know, for variety of reasons, not just setbacks, but and so, you know, there, there are non-conformities out there. Every time we make a new rule, there's probably a set of properties that we make non-conforming by, by just the fact of making that rule. And over time, you know, it's our goal to bring them into conformity and not to make the non-conformity worse, which is really what the statute sets out for us.
Between that and the, also the surveying challenges too, because some of these were surveyed back in like the eighteen hundreds originally when they were built and, you know, all that and it's.
It's, it's challenging, you know, I mean, a lot of these properties were owned by, I mean, just being on this local side, owned by the same family and they just kind of built where they wanted to. There's also building code changes in terms of what was required for buildings, you know, I mean, you know, in the nineteen twenties, I don't really know if they require surveys of, you know, you know, exactly where buildings were, you know, I.
Sometimes building permits weren't obtained.
Or, or weren't even required. So it, you know, the rules and regulations change. It's hard. Even though it's what our natural inclination is to do is to look at it in terms of today's lens. You know, when you get into an older area like downtown, you have to really take a more broader perspective in terms of how things got where they are. I don't think it's through any ill intent by anybody that is garages where it's at. For all I know, it was conforming when it was built. My, it might've been. I haven't gone and done the research back to, I don't know if we've come to a conclusion on exactly the year or years that it was built in, but you know, it might've been conforming at the time. I doubt it, but you know, it could have been, but the rules are what they are now. And that's been that way for some time. And, you know, to have five foot setbacks, provide more separation airflow, the like between properties. And so when you're making improvements to it, that's the time to or expanding it, that's the time to bring the non-conformity into compliance.
I, I guess where I was going with this is that, you know, there's, it's the likelihood that there's going to be other homeowners in a similar situation to this. Who said, you know what? I need to do this. Well, you know, I'm already, you know, because in downtown, you know, if this isn't the only property that has this particular challenge, that means there's a greater likelihood of, you know, of this coming up again. So like, I guess, whether we approve or deny it isn't so much the issue. It's the challenge of, you know, as I'm kind of seeing it, that, you know, we want to encourage people to reinvest in their homes. Right? Because that's a good thing for the community. It's a positive thing for people to have to value their community and say, hey, we want people to be pro, have pride in their homes and pride in the community. So we want to encourage that, but the same token, if we have like challenges where there's, you know, statutes that are making it, creating barriers to doing that, then I think there's something we need to kind of revisit to make sure that we're, you know, kind of allowing some, you know, and this may not be the necessary time, but I guess I'm kind of thinking from that lens, but also perspective of, of that there also may be a, a liability for us too, because if there's like a lot of, you know, situations like this, that this is sort of like, you know, this is, you know, it goes to precedent issue.
Right. I mean, it, that's exactly right. You know, in terms of trying to figure out what, what direction you want to go. And there are other properties, you know, that have non-conforming garages and, you know, but you also have to think as was brought up about, you know, what happens when, you know, maybe the owner isn't the most popular person. And maybe you're in a much difficult, more difficult position. And so I think not just that, those rules were put in place to provide separation and airflow and fire protection between properties. And if we've got an opportunity through an expansion to fix that, that's what we should do. That would be the staff recommendation. Now, if they choose not to and just want to do routine maintenance, they can do that and that's perfectly fine. But if you're going to expand it, our position for my twenty-five years and Kermit's twenty-five years added together as planning directors has been that this is how we approach it. And that really hasn't changed. So that's all I have.
Mayor Blake also has his hand raised when.
I was going to make sure the council questions were asked and then I was going to go and offer Mr. Krone an opportunity. Anyone else here have any other questions? Otherwise I'm gonna have Mr. Krone come on. Okay, go ahead. Kevin.
Go ahead, Blake.
Okay. So now I'm muted. Thank you. So I appreciate the time to be able to speak. I am the homeowner of two twenty North Elm Street. I purchased the home back in two thousand and seven. Our house is a nineteen twenty-six home according to others that we know on the block. It is not the oldest. There's quite a few that are older than ours as well. And I, I think the first thing I want to start off with here is I'm, I'm glad that this presentation came after the one that just was discussed about the Human Rights Committee. And the plan, the twenty twenty-five vision for Chaska, I think if we look at those pillars that were important items for the city of Chaska for twenty twenty-five, we through this entire process have missed the boat and missed the mark on almost every single one of those pillars throughout this process about, you know, from, from where I'm coming from as well as from neighbors in this area. As part of the planning committee, I, I think Kevin could attest to this as, as well as others around is that we did have an unprecedented number of people that came on from the neighborhood to speak on behalf of this project and what they wanted to see happen. And we keep looking at this and keep talking about this word precedent. Michaela said precedence. Kevin's talked about precedence. Matt has talked about precedence. Everybody is talking about this phrase precedence. And what is the precedence that's going to be set? And I feel that you're all looking at it in the wrong direction of the precedence. The precedence that you're all concerned about is what if people come to us and want to do this as well? If people are coming to you and want to do this as well, that's a good thing. That means that people want to invest in their homes and they want to invest in this city. There's plenty of us downtown Chaska folks that I know that we are in this situation right now where we inherited our garages. We did not build them this way. We purchased our land this way. Michaela, if you honestly did get a notice that said, don't touch your garage, because if anything happens to it, you're not going to be able to do anything with it when you bought the house. I'm glad you did because I certainly didn't get that notice. I got my property and I have what I see in there. And as far as my concern was, I would always be able to rebuild that structure if something were to happen to it, say a fire. And I know that we heard from Kevin say about, well, yes, we'd let you rebuild it if, if, you know, more than fifty percent of the structure still exists. I can tell you that that's not necessarily entirely true. The house on three hundred West Second Street, their garage, their roof actually collapsed. And they fought to have to be able to get their garage built exactly back how it was, just doing roof, nothing with the walls. So we're feeling this pressure right now where these non-conformity structures, what we're being told is that we don't care about what your investment is that you have right now. That's the feeling that we get is we don't care about that investment. We want you to fix that non-conforming issue. That non-conforming issue, go to our twenty twenty-five vision and the goals for the strategic goals for City of Chaska. Environmentally conscious city. How are you being environmentally conscious when you're asking somebody to tear down a structure that exists that the walls are standing upright, the foundation of the slab is fully there and functioning? You're asking them to go and tear down all that, put all that waste into Demcon. Now also go and get new materials that you are using to build your new structure, your replacement structure. Right now, today, if you've been trying to do any home improvement projects, you'll know that going to Home Depot, supplies are stretched thin. Due to COVID, due to environmental constraints on resources and everything, supplies are being stretched very thin. So we can't just be wasting our resources that we have by saying, tear down the structure and get rid of the structure and let's move it four feet this way and a half a foot this way. And just a quick point of note reference, while my garage is inches off of the property line, yes, it is also almost four feet from the alleyway where trucks pick it. And a garbage truck did decide to tag one of my corners with their claw arms when it pulled up a, a garbage can that was placed too close to me. And yes, my neighbors have almost taken it out a couple of times because they just got here from abroad the other year and they had no idea how to drive in snowstorm, I feel for them. But there was an incident where, yes, they almost did take out the corner of my garage. And that would happen regardless of where it was, it was four feet or five feet or one foot off the property line. Someone's going to hit your garage. Someone's going to hit your garage. So environmentally conscious city, if we want to be an environmentally conscious city, we can't be wasting resources by telling somebody real, rebuild the structure. That was part of the planning committee's recommendation was just, well, if you rebuild it as a conforming structure, and I'm glad that Mayor Richard, I'm glad that you asked that question about the clarifying statements about the square footage of structures, because I had that question at first too, when I read that ordinance, there was like, why, I can't rebuild it back the same size because it's above the seven hundred and sixty-eight, but Kevin Ringwald did actually clarify that for me and got a clarification that I could rebuild it if I wanted to. But the recommendation from the planning committee to simply move the garage and make it conforming, we still can't, as Matt Podolski was talking about, we still can't go taller. We're still hitting the height restriction. So a lot of it was seeming like we just want to try to force you to get a compliant, a non-compliant structure and compliance you. The other aspect about it is we're trying to create a welcoming and engaging downtown. We're trying to be, you know, quality services. I encourage you to talk to, to Matt about my thoughts as regards to how this process went being started way back in June and trying to get it. Mike Hong and I have also talked regarding my thoughts about the process about being able to go through this variance request. It has not been quality from the get-go. It has been a very frustrating experience for myself and my neighbors, trying to figure out what it is that we are supposed to be doing. How do we actually voice opinions about what's going on? You know, how, how do we get the information that we need to? Because the packets that were delivered to us that I spent a lot of money on being generated, contain no information about the Zoom links or anything like that. When we talk about being a vibrant downtown, a lot of the times what my, what the recommendations to come back from the planning committee has been is focused around my lot is a prominent corner. It's a prominent corner lot, so it's highly visible. And right now, the garage structure that currently exists sits behind a house that has a thirty-foot peak on it from a roof and it's a big massive box. You don't ever see my garage from either direction approaching it. And the street that I'm currently on, Third Street, is not a main artery into the downtown Chaska area. The main artery into downtown Chaska, according to the master plan, is Fourth Street. We have a burnt down garage. That burnt down garage has existed for over a year. I have looked it up. It's burned down longer than a year ago. That is sitting prominently across from City Hall Plaza. When we look at being a vibrant downtown, and again, welcoming and engaging, a burnt down garage doesn't say that, but people that are looking at and trying to find ways to improve their homes, that's what we want to see in this downtown area. Many of these older homes around here, we need to be able to do improvements on them. And a lot of us, we don't feel like we can do improvements because we feel that the codes and the ordinances are wrote in such a way that we're not able to do it. We all joked about, or not me, but you all joked about the whole of not pulling permits. It's not a joke. I can tell you, many of the houses around here don't pull permits. And the reason why is because of this exact reason. It's too difficult to work with the city to get improvements made to our homes. A nineteen twenty home is extremely hard to make it meet codes of today. Like I had to do a bathroom remodel and I pulled a permit for it. And I had to move a wall three inches just so I could get thirty inches on either side of a toilet. Many people can't do that. They don't have that ability to just simply move that, that three inches. We're struggling to try to remodel and try to invest in our properties. And many people are looking at this from the neighbors that I have, and there's a couple of neighbors on the, on the call today that would like to, to speak as well. We're struggling with trying to figure out why we should invest in Chaska. Why should we buy these downtown homes? And why should we? John, if you could move real quick so we could see your sign that's behind you, the city of the Chaska, the best, you know, the best small city or small town in Minnesota. Why is Chaska the best small town in Minnesota if a homeowner is trying to invest in his property, make his property work, spend time meeting with the neighbors to figure out what roof lines work, what, what pitches, what designs, what height makes the most sense to be able to do an audition on. If we're not going to be allowed to do any of these things, it's not really the best small town in Minnesota. There's not that small town charm of being able to know your neighbors, work with your neighbors, have appreciative neighbors that are walking by. I mean, so many of my neighbors have walked by and said, they're looking at what I'm doing to the house and they're very satisfied. They're happy with it because I'm taking a big boxy house and I'm trying to give it character, which is the same thing I'm trying to do to the garage. My concern with what the planning committee's recommendation is of, well, just simply add on to the back of your house. That's not feasible. That's not reasonable. They're not structural engineers. They're not architects. I'm not a structural engineer. I don't have an architectural degree, but I did start to go to school for one of those. And I have grown up around building houses. I've built homes as long as I can remember. I can't just simply add on to the back of my house. Doing that changes my entire load bearing structures and will require immense beams and reconstruction of basically my entire home just to be able to add an office on, when I can simply do that as a loft space above my garage. The concern that I have as a homeowner is what we're saying is for those of you that have these homes, we want you to make your homes be really large, big boxes with no character. That sounds an awful lot like what happened to Edina, where now we're being told, let's have these big boxy houses that swamp the lots so that there's not a lot of character anymore. And then now you have the issues of real estate values going all over the place because. so that there's not a lot of character anymore. And then now you have the issues of real estate values going all over the place because of these mix matches of, of the homes. One of the things that Kevin Ringwald also mentioned about was changing a roof, you know, we, we've asked the, I can't remember who it was that asked the question about allowing them to change, you know, some of the maintenance and everything. Well, technically speaking, I could go out and buy a roof structure, a stress system that would contain a storage loft in there and that raises the height. Kevin, are you telling me that if that's part of the roof, that's what I can do? Because this is where we're into that gray area of if I'm simply just changing my roof to repair my roof, I certainly can go buy roof trusses that have a built-in loft space inside of it and it's still technically part of the roof truss. So there's, there's a lot of gray area in here that we're trying to, trying to navigate through. And I understand everybody's concern about the precedence of what is this going to do if we say this, but you heard Deb say it in the beginning of the presentation for the Met Council, 13%, almost 216,000 people are now teleworkers. Imagine if there was a community or imagine if there was a city that enabled teleworking, that supported people that had these smaller downtown homes that have detached garages that if they wanted to, could put a teleworking suite above the garage as a small loft. That would be something that is a 2025 vision. That is something that we can take home and to, and say is we're welcoming and we're engaging the new norm of what this life has to be. I won't ever have an office. The reason for my hardship is I used to get on a plane and fly 42 weeks out of the year. I flew everywhere that I needed to go for my job. I don't have an office anywhere. Right now, what I have is I have only the space that I'm sitting in, that I'm trying to work when, which also is my kid's office area and my wife's office area, who is also full-time working from home now for the foreseeable future. She's an HR director. She needs to be able to have a place to have private conversations with her employees where I don't even hear the conversations or the kids don't hear the conversations. That is something that's extremely important for HR is that they can have a private area to communicate. That's why we're trying to do all this is trying to get it so that we have a space that enables us to have private communications for her when she needs to. And for when I'm delivering courses to the, to my students in the new e-learning, I have a classroom space where I can actually have a whiteboard and I can have camera setups to be able to deliver my medium. I won't ever be going back to an office. Some of you are sitting in your office at the, at City Hall or wherever it might be. I don't have that luxury. I only have what's here. And right now for us, if we can't make it work here, there's no reason for us to stay here. If there's no reason for us to stay here, then that's when we start to move. We like Chaska. We want to be here. We're trying to figure out ways to invest and help with the Chaska Cubs baseball team down in LaFleche Park to be able to help them get IT services for the tournament this year, well, next year now. I say this year because summer's already over, uh, unfortunately. We want to be able to work with Chaska and I, I like these 2025 visions that the city of Chaska is putting forward that they want to go through it. But how do we actually meet those? Because right now with what we're working with, we're not meeting those targets. We're struggling to do that and I, I want there to be the precedent set that says, we want you to invest in those homes that are difficult to remodel, difficult to invest in and difficult to take care of. We want you to know that city is behind you and we're going to support you when you go through it to try to do these improvements to your property. That's the precedence that I want to have set. I'm not concerned about the precedence about people saying, well, I want to do this because if they're doing that, that means that that's investments in Chaska, that's investments in our homes and that's a good thing. The setbacks are the setbacks. We're not going to be able to get rid of them. Kevin even said it himself. Go downtown. Majority of the places, they have a accessory structure that does not meet the setback requirements. And a lot of the properties, there's no way that they can make it meet the setback requirements. That's just the fact of life. But that's what we purchased as investors in our property is the structure that exists. We don't get warning labels that says, hey, if you buy this property and something happens to it, the city of Chaska is not going to let you rebuild the structure. That doesn't come with the homes that we purchased because that's a negative to the sale. The seller's not going to want to inform people of that. So I, if there's any questions for me or otherwise, like I said, there are a couple of people from the neighborhood that would like to speak as well.
I guess, um, I want to, sorry, my dogs are going to be barking. Um, just clarify that I didn't receive a notice from anyone. My Realtor is experienced in selling in Chaska and old homes. She had me look at the plot. It's very easy to see that my garage sits outside of what I own due to townhomes being built behind my house. So to be clear, I had a Realtor that made sure I was informed of my city's ordinances and that I knew that I wouldn't be able to. So, um, I want to be clear that way. I guess I take a little issue with the strategic plan being used against us that way when you probably read it or informed yourself fully and just heard it briefly before. Because I know a lot of what we were discussing doesn't really apply that way. Um, when we talk about precedent, these um ordinances are in place and have been in place because they need to be. So when I talk about a precedent that I don't want to set, it's not because our precedent is wrong, like, um, that I want to change that precedence that we, you know, people can add on or whatever, but if my whole street is people that have non-conforming Bentley, non-conforming garages because of the townhomes that were built behind it. If we all went and added, oh, added something to it to make it non-conforming, it would change how our block looks and how downtown looks. So I appreciate the ordinances in place so that that protects the historicness of downtown. So I understand what you're saying. I just think, I wanted to make sure that we were saying the same thing um and using things correctly, if that makes sense.
Understood. And I'd love to mention that. I, I just wanted to say one quick response to that is um, I have a hard time with quite a few of the, the, the city staff that make assumptions like that. Like I haven't looked at the strategic plan before. I actually know people on the planning committee. I've looked at the, what they've been doing. I've taken great care in trying to figure out what the master plan is for downtown because I live downtown and I've lived down here. So like I said, since 2007. This isn't something I just looked at prior to this meeting. It's because of the fact that it was the slides directly before mine as I was reading through the agenda to see what's going on. Those bullet points were there, so I can easily reference them. So I, 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 I don't, I, I don't appreciate the quick assumption of, oh, you're just using this against us. I have done research about the master downtown plan and the vision for it. There's more to me to this aspect of it.
Sure. The strategic plan and the master planner are different things. The strategic plan is set by the council, not the planning commission. So that's where I was just clarifying.
I guess my clarifying question, I just want to confirm because you talk about the ability not to just add on to the back of your house. But I do believe if I look at the plans and kind of understand the conversations that I, that, you know, had at the council or the planning commission, excuse me, on the meeting. Um, if you, you could meet the setback requirements, you could, you could do exactly, I believe, if I look at the property and lay out, you could build exactly what you want to do. It would cost more, I understand that. But you have the space on your lot to do the five feet on each side and actually do what you're doing with your structure that doesn't require you to um add on to the back of your house. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, as from what I was told and what was clarified by Kevin Ringwald, uh, when he and I talked after the planning committee, so this was long after this was when I basically made a bunch of phone calls and said, look, this process is horrible. None of my neighbors felt heard. None of my neighbors feel like we are actually listened to, be understood or respected or have empathy shown to us. When Kevin and I finally, he and I talked and Kevin's been on email since June. So when he and I finally actually got on a call with Matt Podarski, yes, we did ask that question about, that was something that both Matt and I wondered about is can the structure be built in the exact same size that it exists today? With meeting setbacks and we didn't have a, a answer at that time. Kevin, I appreciate he did do some legwork and he went and figured out that yes, the structure could be built in the exact same way. However, that still doesn't solve the problem. We still hit the height compliance issue. So moving the property or moving, moving the structure doesn't fix the problem. And again, like I said, how are you going to tell me that you are environmentally conscious city if you're telling somebody to tear down a structure that exists and fill Demcon?
Yeah, I got a question. I guess I'll just be honest. I don't necessarily agree with that argument of environmental conscious because you're also choosing to add on to your house that's going to create or add on to that. I, I understand that. I make sense and I, I'm not wasting.
I am adding.
But, but like I said, the.
Basically, I'm adding a total of about fifty.
Excuse me, I just want to finish my comment.
Cut down for the walls.
I just want to finish my comments. Sorry Blake. Um, I, I, I just don't think that's a fair argument to throw towards the city that we're not being environmentally conscious because we're forcing people to, you know, tear down and rebuild. You are also adding cost and wood and structure to that too. So there's, there's a mutual decision here that's being made, both by the city and by you that has an environmental impact. So I, I, that, that's my personal opinion. Uh, again, I'm not disagreeing with you that it's not, that stuff's going to end up in Demcom as waste. But I, it's not a hundred percent of you're being a hundred percent conscious of environment and we're being the big evil city versus, you know, making you throw it all in the dumpster too. I don't think that's a fair assessment.
Well, again, assumptions for made about what type of materials I'm building with. Am I using environmentally conscious materials or not? So again, I would appreciate if there was more of a, well, a more respectful way of looking at it. Like right now, I'm throwing a bunch of wood into a, into the Demcon facility if, if I have to rebuild the structure. Rebuilding the structure goes down to, then as we figure out, is there environmentally friendly ways to rebuild it and jacking up the roof is basically all that I'm doing. So the roof trusses are coming off regardless. There's minimal differences. And I'll be honest, as I've got neighbors that are texting me right now that are already saying, this is this isn't acceptable for, for how we, again, it's we don't feel heard, we don't feel understood, we don't necessarily feel fully respected through what we're trying to do, which is improve downtown homes.
Yeah, Blake, what I can say too is, is, you know, you and I have talked and I, I, I do, I share the compassion that your, your, your spouse in HR about wanting people to be heard. And I appreciate the time you've taken to, to present to the councils, protect the planning commission. You've made a lot of phone calls, you know, so I don't want you to feel like you haven't been heard. Now, I'm not going to make you change that opinion. Um, we're definitely listening to you and we're asking you good questions and I, I hope that you know, the conversation, I think you and I probably chatted 45 minutes, uh, you know, several. And again, to me, I, I, I want you to be heard. Now, I also know and I, I'm sure you're you're, and you and your career and your spouse can assist. Sometimes you can hear someone and respect them. But I'm still, it might still not lead to the answer that you're hoping for. And, and I don't know, we, we have to, you know, continue to discuss this. I'm not saying that's implying that. But I do want people who are listening and yourself to make sure that you are being heard and you are being respected. Um, you know, and, and I do appreciate you coming and having this conversation and you, you know, you, you've spent a lot of time and money, no one's going to deny that into this process. And so I, I do appreciate that. And um, you know, I, 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 like I said, I, I, I know that I'm, you know, if you, if someone has that opinion that they're not being heard, this isn't to try to convince them that they're being heard. I just want to make sure like that's my intent. I want you to feel like you're being heard. What I, what I can't guarantee you is you're going to get the answer you want, but I want you to be, know that you're being heard as one council member and I, I know the rest of my council members and the mayor enough to know that they're listening to you and, and the city's listening to you as well.
So Blake, uh, you know, I know we talked quite a bit at, at length on this topic too. And you know, I, I do sincerely believe you have a personal hardship in your home with the situation as it is. You know, that's, that's real, you know, that's something you experience in every day. Um, I also believe that you spent a lot of time doing your due diligence, trying to understand and trying to come up with a reasonable solution. It's very clear you spent a lot of time investing and creating a thoughtful design, getting neighbors to buy in, to get agreement on this. And that's something that is really, really important. Um, but one of the challenges that we have with precedent, and we're talking legal precedent, is the issue is that legal precedent opens Pandora's box for people who are not thoughtful, who are not conscientious, who want to just shove something down the neighbor's throat to spite them or to piss somebody off um to do things in that regard, using the exact same tools. And one of the challenges we have is that by opening that door, it's not just the good thoughtful people to go through, but it's also people who want to use the system and challenge it and push the system to its limits for something that may not be as um, as pleasant or as appealing in, in a, in a home. And because you can't, you can't legislate thoughtfulness, you can't legislate taste, right? And so that's one of the challenges that I feel your pain, right? Because it's a very real thing. And I do want to help you, but we're also dealing with the state statute here too, not just the city. So the state statute has four key criteria that were bound to upheld and we've all sworn to oath to uphold the state constitution, including these statutes. One is the situation was not created by the homeowner. Completely agree. You didn't, you didn't build or construct that. You didn't draw the property line. That was something you had no control over. Does it alter the, does it alter the character of the neighborhood? I think that's debatable. I would tend to look at what you did as a thoughtful thing and say, well, I don't think it necessarily alters it based on the location and geography and things like that. But from a reasonable use perspective, you know, the legal, the, the legal determinant there is that can you use it as a garage? Yes, you can. Are there other alternatives you want to build? Yes, there are. And they, and they specifically stipulate in the state statute that legal, that economic considerations are not something to be used as a primary, um, a primary lever against this. So that said, from a legal perspective, I honestly just can't see any way to justify granting a variance as, as much as I really would like to. Because I mean, I believe that we need to, we need to do the right thing for Chaska to encourage people to invest, to make sure that people want to stay downtown, that people want to take pride in their homes. But unfortunately, from tonight's perspective, based on the legal, you know, the legal statute, I went and actually pulled up the actual statute from the state website. And, you know, because I'm, I've been dealing with this particular statute for a long time, just to make sure I refresh my memory on it. And I just can't see a way to justify this legally without putting the city in a, you know, in a legal conundrum moving forward. Um, but that said, I think you have a legitimate concern about the downtown reinvestment, about allowing homeowners to, you know, construct and to reinvest. And if, you know, and if there's others who are in similar situations where they want to do things, I think as a council, we do owe it to the citizens of the residents of downtown to be able to look at, how can we look at other options to allow like thoughtful things to happen in a, in a, in a way that makes sense. Um, but you know, for tonight though, I mean, I can't support it just a purely legal basis that to me is very unfortunately very black and white. And like I said, I'm really sorry, but that's just kind of where it is from that legal perspective.
Or anyone else have a comment?
I'd like to hear from the neighbors that he had said were on the line if possible.
Okay, yeah, and when, when we get, um, I just have a couple of things and then, then we can do that. Um, so my question to, to you Blake is if take away the non-conforming piece, if you built that structure, you would have to take the roof off, correct?
If I rebuilt the structure?
If you, if you built, say there was a conforming structure and you wanted to build what you want to build, would the current roof have to come off?
Yes, the current roof has to come off regardless because it's falling apart.
Okay, and where does that go?
That stuff is already planned. I, with my neighbors, we burned the majority of the wood in our, in our fire pits and then the shingles and the asphalt's underlayment are the only things that is planned to go to Demcon right now.
Okay. Legally.
I, I actually do have, uh, I have eighteen hundred um, square feet of steel siding sitting along my fence as well as thirty windows that I replaced that are currently waiting to be picked up to go to reuse centers. I minimize my waste as much as I possibly can on all of my remodeling works. My goal is to not have waste. So whatever we have is trying to be reused somewhere else, whether it's in the neighborhood or whether it's down at our farm or somewhere, we try to minimize the waste as much as possible.
Okay. Well, it's just because you said that we're forcing you to take it to, to Demcon, but we're not forcing you that. That's a decision that you are making because you want to rebuild the structure. So.
I don't want to rebuild the structure. Let me get that straight. I don't want to rebuild the structure.
You, you, if you built what you want to build, you are changing that structure way over 50% of what the structure is.
No, I take, I, 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 I one hundred percent disagree with that statement. I am shaving a roof off and that is it. The walls of the entire, all, all the walls in that garage will not be touched. Everything above the king plate will not be, will be taken off, but everything below the king plate will not be touched and it's just the roof that is being removed. That's it because the roof is sagging and I have temporary beams in place to maintain it so that it doesn't collapse. And it's just the roof that is being removed. That's it because the roof is sagging and I have temporary beams in place to maintain it so that it doesn't collapse. That, that's my point is that the walls would not be removed as part of this project. But that's what the solution that's being presented to me is, is to tear down the entire garage structure, rebuild the entire garage structure. But oh, by the way, you still can't build your, your loft because we have a height restriction code.
But you already heard, you already heard say that the height issue could be resolved.
I don't have that in writing that I would be allowed to build it above the, the height.
Well.
I have a, maybe we.
That was, that was stated once we got past the non-conforming part, that that could and possibly be worked out. So that was.
I grew up with a lawyer as a stepdad. I don't, I don't look at could's, it's, I need absolutes. Like this will absolutely be allowed, then I would possibly entertain that.
Okay. All right, I, I, I'm good. We'll, we'll, uh, we'll have your neighbors come on at this point then.
Hi, if anybody's still on.
Yeah, I think it's Chelsea, one of your neighbors?
Yes.
Chelsea, if you want to unmute. Chelsea, if you're able, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, yeah, I'm Chelsea. I live two hours down. I was on, I live at two twelve North Elm Street, but I was on the last, um, call in October two, um, but I just wanted to hop on just to support Blake and Amy and what they're doing. And, um, I, I just kind of think that with the way things, you know, are changing with, with just our community and with our world in general right now, that those kinds of codes and everything, and even if they are with the state and come from the state, that, that kind of stuff is eventually going to have to be, that kind of stuff needs to be looked at. And that stuff should be looked at now, especially in the time we're living in right now. I mean, who knows? I mean, I travel, I used to travel a little bit for mo, for work and we for sure are not going back to traveling at least until June. Um, so that's been a whole, that'll be a whole year, over a whole year that I won't be traveling for work. So, um, I, I don't have the, I don't have the animal, um, well, the kids and, and the wife or partner, you know, at home. Like, like Blake and Amy do. I mean, they got a full house, but I just feel like, I understand where you guys are coming from on some of these. You know, that, that, there's not a lot that can be done because the state of Chaska might get in trouble. I don't think you'd see a whole lot of neighbors trying to jump on, on the same wagon there. But I, I mean, I understand where you guys are coming from. I just, maybe that's, maybe that's the route that needs to be taken. And we need to make some change, changes with, with that, you know, so people can. And so that not everybody that wants to make some changes like this have to go through that later on when the time comes. But I'm all for it. I think the plans look great. I think, you know, if there's, if there's any possible way for them to be able to do it, I totally a hundred percent support it. And I think it'll look, I think it'll look nice. I don't think it's going to disrupt the nature of the historic look, uh, you know, the historic look of Chaska. I don't think we'll, it will do that at all. So. Got my vote, but that's my two cents. Thank you.
Greatly appreciate it. I, I, and I don't disagree. I, and I didn't get a, I, I should have stated it earlier. I, I think what he's doing to the house looks great. I, I think the porch you put on front is awesome. I, I think the, the, the garage and how you want to do that is awesome. But it, it's just the fact that the structure is non-conforming. It's so, uh, you know, that's, that's the issue of it. I, like I said, so far, everything you've done there. I mean, if I've been by there once, I've been by there a dozen times, if not more. And, and looking at things and, but it's, it's still a non-conforming structure. And that's what we, what we have to deal with at this point. So, all right, is that Neil on? Is that Neil? Is that somebody, uh, that's a neighbor also?
No, I think, I'm checking to see if Zach is still on here.
Yeah, there was a show that you're on earlier, but, uh, they're no longer on.
Yeah, he, that, that might have been, that might have been Zach.
Okay.
So, uh, this Neil is not part of, uh, anyone then here?
I think Neil was, uh, I think that was, uh, from the Human Rights Commission agenda item.
Oh, okay. Um, so, so there is no one else that's on, that's a, that's a neighbor then? I just want to verify that.
Nope, Zach went to bed.
Okay, all right.
So you touched on the, the process of like, okay, so what would, you know, Blake, if you needed an absolute to say, okay, you know, there's a, you know, to get down that, to say, okay, if we, if you relocated the garage, but you could, we can give you a variance on the, on the height, you basically have to go through the process. You know, the application process or just take the design and say, okay, this is what we would be requesting. Is that Matt and Kevin, that's, is that, that's the process that Blake would have to go through to make this happen? To get that, to get that variance?
Correctly, yes, that is correct. Let's just say his garage was five feet and five feet currently. Then he would be before you for a height variance. I think the thing that Matt brought up is kind of looking at the Smirkin kind of, requests and saying, um, you know, one of the things that we could look at is, is there an administrative way to deal with, um, minor, um, pieces on a garage that would allow them to match better with, um, existing roof lines and other criteria. We would need to get the HPC Planning Commission. There, there's a process we would go through, but it wouldn't, my, my idea wouldn't be that it would be, after all that was done, that you'd have to go through some variance process. If we thought there was some way to accomplish that, that, um, you would just build in a piece of the code, which would allow people uh, and give them guidance on, on what to do and what would be okay. Would there still be somebody say, if you said seventeen feet's okay? If somebody could come in eventually and say, I need seventeen and a half, absolutely. But, uh, or if you said eighteen, someone's going to come and say, I need twenty. It, it's not going to eliminate variances, but I think that, you know, evaluating that and saying, you know, is there room in the code to come up with an exception for, in the downtown area because of the unique structures that we have down there with different roof lines and stuff? Is there a way of something you could do? And I think we'd want to engage, um, you know, the community, the planning commission, the HPC, um, to talk about that and get that figured out. Um, and if you could come up with an answer and it seemed to make sense to the HPC, the planning commission, then the city council, then you could put that piece in place, um, which would allow people, um, to do that. That I don't see that changing from the staff perspective, um, regarding the non-conformity issues. That that really isn't going to change, um, or should change. Um, because that's a fundamental element of the code is those setbacks, and I think that's very important. And so, so I, hopefully I think that answers your question that.
I think, I think the big thing, I think the big thing is, is that, you know, we, we heard Mr. Crony talk about, you know, the importance of, you know, having people reinvest back into their property. And, and there is unique things that, you know, as far as the structure, you know, how the structures are built, what they look like, all those different types of things throughout downtown. And I do think that there's, uh, administrative processes that we could get set up to be able to deal with these minor, uh, changes with things like height. And I use the Smirka as example because I think that's a really good one. Is that, um, you know, if you built that roof with a ten, twelve pitch and the house was at a twelve, twelve pitch, and, you know, it wouldn't look as good. And so, you know, if you, if going to a twelve, twelve pitch has to bring it up a foot or whatever the case may be, that, uh, you know, that, that seems like a reasonable type of thing to help somebody reinvest back in their property. So that's the type of thing that you'd want to take it through a process and make sure that, um, you know, everybody agrees that, you know, looking at these sort of minor things to accomplish certain goals makes some sense. I, I think that that process makes, makes a lot of sense, especially as we're looking to try to see reinvestment in downtown. But I think I agree with Kevin that the non-conformity side of it, I, I, to, to me, that's, that's, a non-conformity is a non-conformity. And I think that that's, you know, it's, it's a big enough deal that it is in state statute and not just in our city ordinance. Uh, but on things like height, I, I do think there's things we can do differently in the city.
So I guess, I, I guess that, you know, my comment is I would be definitely in support of, you know, any, you know, activities that would allow us to streamline the process. So that way, you know, if nothing else comes about from this experience that we can at least streamline the process so others in the future, Mr. Crony doesn't have to experience something like this again, so he booked for another change or something else that, you know, it's, it's more clear and it's less arduous, less time consuming.
Well, but I think, I do think we have to be careful about something. The, the non-conformity caused the, the arduous process here. And, and so, I, I mean, we are, I, I guarantee you that if there's people that want to deal with things with a non-conformity, people do not like to go through a variance process. It's not a fun process to go through. And I don't think, I just don't want to set expectations that we're ever going to eliminate that, that process. There are going to be people that, uh, you know, they're going to, to run into us. But I do think that we can make a much more streamlined process for, uh, things that are, are meant to, to, to deal more with just minor type of things. You know, that, that could be a very streamlined type of process. I think we could probably do it administratively and wouldn't necessarily have to go through, uh, you know, the council or the planning commission to do. I think that's very possible. But I don't want to, I don't want to create the, the sense that, that I think we could have avoided that here because there was, there was really a bigger issue.
There were two issues.
Yeah, just, right, there's a non-conformity, which is much more of the, it's, it's, it's rooted in state statute, right? And then there's the other things that are more specific to our community with like exact height of the roof or pitch or things like that. They're more, you know, detailed that, okay, those are like more local ordinances that we have more direct control over.
Yep.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I, I do want to make sure, and I think we, every one of us council, I think agrees with this and some of us have said it. Like, you know, we're not trying to find roadblocks for, in people, for anyone, wherever they live, to be able to invest in their house. And, you know, and we talked about how the downtown does present unique challenges. So anything that can look, can be looked at to help address those unique challenges. But to me, it, it does go back to that, the non-conformance, you know, two wrongs don't make a right. So, you know, making a bigger structure that's non-conformance doesn't make it right. And you know, and, and being a good person, uh, Blake and, or Mr. Crony, you know, I appreciate that, you know, you, you, you got support of your neighbors. But I think, you know, uh, council member Wong said exactly right is that, you know, just because you're a good person and have done your research and presented it well and everything, like I said, doesn't miss me like, well, we should just approve it. Because someone will take advantage of that. And I appreciate your approach. Don't get me wrong. Uh, but that's, that's to me, I, like I said, I, I think we do want to look at how can we encourage investment. But it has to be conformance. And I'll be a hundred percent on it. The line you said yourself kind of sets my opinion on this. Is the fact that you tell me that a dumpster hits the garage the way it already exists. Like, that is the reason for those setbacks for safety and for that. Um, you know, because it.
That was because of where the neighbors placed the garbage can.
But it all goes into it, right?
Garbage can on my property, which it should have never been placed to begin with. So, no, please don't. That, that, that was used against me actually during the planning committee as well. And this is my huge issue with statements being made as facts to reinforce, yes, the roadblocks that the city is trying to present to us. Because we do constantly feel, if you, I wish it was daylight, because I would love that you could see, and you're not going to be able to see it. But the property next to me, you talked about two wrongs don't make it right, is owned by the county of Carver, has work done without permits and had half the garage ripped off and is a huge ugly eyesore to us in this community. And nobody ever does anything about it. I'm trying to do the right thing here. And what it comes across as being penalized for trying to actually do the right thing, when you have a government property that should know that they need to pull permits in order to do the type of work that they did.
Well, I do appreciate you clarifying that. If I, I didn't want to misspoke about the garbage cans. I appreciate that. But I do, like I said, I, I, I would support, you know, the city looking at some of those types of things. But, um, you know, like I said, I think the fact that it's non-conformance and making a bigger non-conformance is, is my concern. As, you know, many of us said, um, you know.
See, I struggle with that bigger non-conformity. I really do struggle with that bigger non-conforming aspect of it when the land use itself, the land mass does not change. The only thing that's changing is height. Kevin even stated himself, the four wa, or well, it's more than four walls, but let's genericize it down. The four walls are staying the same. Nothing's changing there. It's a vertical use that is, that isn't being changed, nothing else. So one can argue that from a, making a non-conforming structure larger, it's not really even doing that because I'm not even touching the side that's by the, by the alleyway, which is a cause of concern. The only thing that we're touching is the side, the section that's within the setback requirements. Even Kevin himself said that we are allowed to combine two structures. These structures were built as two physically separate structures. They were built at two different times. They're built back to back, but they were built as two separate structure units. I'm trying to make the modification with, in terms of an improvement on the structure that conforms. And I'm changing and redoing the roof on the non-conforming side. So again, there, I mean, we can argue this all night long. There's certainly ways to justify both sides of the, of the equation. Tell, tell Kyle's going home. I mean, that, that's, that's something that we can certainly do. And I think I, I gather what the opinion is already of, of the, of the council and which way this is going to go. Because all from the beginning, it's always been as we requested denial of this from the get-go. I mean, even way back when, when Elizabeth first sent the email, it was, no, this isn't going to be allowed. So basically the tone was, this isn't going to be allowed. Just don't bother doing this because this can create work for me.
Mr. Crown?
Yes.
Can I just put in, I, I would appreciate if you didn't assume that because what their recommendation is, is what their recommendation is. My job as the selected leader is to read through all of the information that's presented, listen and make an opinion based on the discussion that's being put forth. Now, I have listened for this whole entire time, listened to your presentation, listened to Kevin's presentation, listened to your neighbor's presentation. I think, and I, I definitely don't want to put words in the council member Gra's mouth, but I think what he was trying to get at with the conformity part is, you know, your property is an older property. Your property, obviously there were different things that were, um, ordinances and allowances for setbacks. But now that's not the case. And you want to change your property and state statute says, hey, if you do this, you have to make it into conformity. You have to make your setback. You have to move your structure away from that alleyway. You're arguing that all you're doing is adding a roof. And I agree with you. It seems like a simple argument. But it's like when we do road reconstruction, we don't just go in, dig up the road and then just pave it over. We have to go in, we have to put new gutters in these old roads. We have to put all new pipes and sewer lines in as well because things age and you need to bring them into conformity. It's, it's, to me, it correlates along a lines of the same lines. That's just my piece on that. So I would please appreciate if you just, just know that not, I don't think we all go into this meeting going, we're just going to strike this down. Cause that definitely was not my case. I sat on your side like fifteen plus years ago over ball field lights in my neighborhood. I understand your frustrations. I was there and had those same frustrations too. Because I felt like I wasn't being heard and I wasn't, you know, no one was taking me seriously. So I just want you to know that that is not the opinion of the council, at least for me, and I would assume other council members.
All right, uh, thanks Taylor. Uh, anyone else, uh, have anything before you want to move forward or what your thoughts are? And, and I, I do agree, uh, that, um, we keep hearing the, the word we, no one's been listening. We have been listening. There's been, um, a two plus hour, if not longer, when I sat and watched the planning commission meeting. Um, I know that you've had a bunch of staff time. So I, I think people are listening. Cause if, saying what you're saying that, that Liz just said, we're, we're not going to do it. It's just a waste of my time. Well, I, I, I think that what your statement is, is you've proved yourself wrong because we're still here. We're, uh, well into an hour into this and people are listening and, and we have been listening. And I think that there's been. And I think that there's been valid questions asked and concerns and, um, but again, we as a council, we have to follow the law. I, I get it that, that your neighbors all agree. I, I would, if I was your neighbor, I'd go, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. But it's not about that. It's about what the law says. And the law says we have to follow this about a non-conforming and, and the fact that you say that the garage isn't any bigger, your square footage is going to increase. So when we say bigger, we're not, we're not necessarily saying square footage. We're just saying it's a bigger structure than what it was before we started. And it, like I said, I agree with you. We're going to sit and argue this. And we're not going to come to a conclusion because we have different views on how we look at things. And i- it's unfortunate, but again, um, we're following the law and we've certainly spent a, a, a lot of time in listening and, and, and answering the questions that you have and getting our questions answered. So I, the part about not being heard, I, I, I do struggle with that. And sometimes we're not, we feel that we're not being heard because we're not getting the answer that we want to hear. And, and that's the hard part of reality sometimes. Um, but I, I, again, we have to follow laws and and, and unfortunately, th- this is a state law. This isn't even a city law. We already said we can, we can work with the height, which we have control about, but we don't, the, the, the non-conformity part about setbacks, that's, that's set before us by the state.
Not agreeing. And I, I will say is that, yes, you guys have listened and, and I know, I mean, you've been asking questions that are clarification questions and I do appreciate the fact that at least I get to answer the clarification questions this time around as opposed to uh, other meetings. The not listening goes back months and months and months and months and months back to June when this process started. So there's, it's getting better, but I do believe that's partially due to how many calls I have made to try to get the feeling. Again, I, I told Matt this as well and Kevin on the calls that we've had, these are all I feel statements. This is what we are feeling. It's not necessarily what you are portraying Taylor. It's not necessarily, it's like, you know, I read somebody language. I could tell you're tired because and you had the kids trying to go to bed and wanting to know where you're going and stuff. It, it feels that way because my kids have been asking me for bed and everything too. So it's, we're all struggling with everything that we're trying to do virtually and everything in here. And it's changing dynamics of how do we communicate and how do we work differently in, in environments? It's, it's a change. It is a complete different change. The, the feeling of not being heard has been from just how it progressed to where we're at. And I talked to John and Mike at lengths about the process and what I felt were failures in the process leading up to this point. It has nothing to do with the money spent or anything like that. Money can be made again. Hopefully money can be made again. It's more of the, the time spent on it, the time trying to understand what the actual ask is, what's needed to present, do you get to present? Why, why is the person not presenting first? Why, why are the, the presentations first been made by somebody that, you know, even inside the packets, it's a, a motion to deny, a request to deny. You know, that's what we as, as people that are trying to do things, we feel this, we see this as we're facing that brick wall up front because that's what we see presented in front of us. That's, that's how we feel the process is going. It, it doesn't mean, no, you know, we spent two hours on the conference call. That's great. That's that one point in time, but it's everything leading up into it. It's all about the entire process, not just where we're sitting right now. And I think the horse is beaten into the glue factory.
The process about presentation and all that, that nothing has changed. We've, that's the way we've always done it. There is never, I mean, it's always been presented by staff. I, I don't know how, I mean, if, if we base it on, we have to have the facts and, and while I, I know that you disagree with how Liz presented it. I watched that planning commission and I thought she laid out your request, the facts. I thought she laid out everything. I, I'm, so I, I'm not sure where, where the, the disagreement is other than the fact that we disagree in what we feel, uh, the outcome should be. So I, I, like I said, I, um, I don't know. I, I, I you know, like I said, we're, we're, we're apparently not going to, uh, uh, agree to disagree on this by any way, shape or form and we're just, like I said, we're doing what we are, are taught to do to, 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 to listen, get the facts, make the decisions from the facts. And the fact that the, the, that the staff report says denial because that's what came out of the planning commission. If it said approved, it would come out of the planning commission to say it doesn't change. It's coming out what, what the planning commission, who are the people that take and look at all of the facts and all of, all of the ordinance is to make sure that it complies. Um, we have more of the human element than the planning commission. The planning commission bases it on what's out there. Um, but again, this is, I don't know, this is, I, like I said, you're probably right. I, I can kind of tell where this is probably going to go, but um, it, it's, we, we gotta follow the law, otherwise we gotta deal with it. And, and that goes back to what council member Happy was talking about. We got strapped with something that a previous council done. And, and they, they paid for it later and, you know, and, you know, nobody wants to go through something that, especially if we did it wrong. I mean, if we did it right and got to deal with it, I, I'm okay with that because we did it right. We followed. That's the one thing that the city of Chaska has worked on is be, being fair and consistent. While you won't feel that right now, we're being fair and consistent because we're looking at this and we're following what our ordinances are set up. And, and, um, like I said, that's what we do as a council. We're going to look at it and, and make our decision based on on the information. And I think tonight and between your comments in our staff reports, um, I, I think, you know, pretty much the facts are out there and they've been all laid out on the table. So I, I don't know if anyone else from the council has anything else to say or, or, um, what your thoughts are. Otherwise I would entertain some sort of a, uh, motion on, uh, resolution twenty twenty dash eighty-eight expansion of accessory structure. And, and to know that this motion would be for the denial. So if it's something different, it would be to be stated, but this is for, uh, a resolution twenty twenty dash eighty-eight is the denial of the request. That is correct, Matt and Kevin? That's the way I read it. Okay. Right. So, uh, like I said, I would be open to, uh, uh, a motion however council feels.
So moved by Hatfield. As is.
So, so you're, you're adopting resolution twenty twenty eighty-eight?
Yes.
So I have a motion by council member Hatfield.
Second by council member Hubbard.
Second by council member Hubbard. Any further discussion?
I just like add the comment, like, I really, really hate to deny things because I just, you know, it's not why we want to be, the, why any of us want to be here. So, you know, it's, it's always, it's always greatly pain to say no. And so I, I never take this lightly.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to echo council member Wong's sentiment. The tiredness on my face isn't because I'm tired. It's because I really don't want to say no to things because I understand why you want this to happen. And I, again, will echo the fact that I was you fifteen years ago in a different capacity. And I understand that right now it really hurts. But it's also the legality standpoint of it. And that's really the only reason why for me.
Okay. All right. No, no one else? Uh, at this point then, uh, we have a motion second on the floor. Then I am going to go ahead and again, the motion was, uh, customer Hatfield second by council member Hubbard. So, all right, uh, roll call. Council member Wong. Council member Hubbard.
Hi.
Council member Gra.
Hi.
Council member Hatfield.
Yes.
Mayor Winchell, yes, uh, passes. So resolution twenty twenty dash eighty-eight, which is a denial passes five-oh. Uh, well, thanks, Mr. Crony for, uh, I see he's off, but thanks for uh, being on tonight and sharing your insight. Thank you. All right, uh, that is the last of action items. Uh, we move on to item ten bills.
I'll try to get through it quick here. So, um, let's see, page two, associate mechanical contractors. There's an item for an RTU repair for crooked pine. What's the RTU?
It's a rooftop, uh, rooftop HVAC unit needed some repair.
Gotcha. Okay, got it. Um, page two, also on page two, Bay West, um, item hotspot consulting. I, you know, I know the hotspot consulting thing is something we were stringing out for a while. It's like, are we almost the end of it? Because it feels like it's been forever.
Yeah, we're getting close, but keep in mind, we're not paying for any of this because we have dollars in uh, in escrow to cover these costs. It's just to, to get these sites actually taken care of by the MPCA takes a long time.
Yeah. So is this something like, you know, our grandkids are going to see like repaid finally or? Like how long?
Yeah, I mean, what, what in essence the MPCA does is go through all the processes to show that the environmental work was done correctly.
So this is, so what's the, what's the time? I want you to do like the last one of these, uh, come through. Do we ever really know?
Like when you grow hair. Does that give you, does that give you an answer?
Yeah.
The MPCA.
Yeah, I, I have a, uh, I don't have a date for you, Mike, but, um, I was hiking with my daughter on the trail last weekend and she kept asking me how close to her to the end. And I told her we're closer now than we've ever been every time she asked. So.
Awesome. Thank you for the inspirational quotes.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll, you'll keep them moving closer to the end like than we've ever been.
Right.
Okay. So page seven, um, there's an item for, um, was it, uh, it's for, it's an item for dark trace services, which sounds ominous and creepy and mysterious all at the same time. Just curious what dark trace services are.
Yeah, it's part of our ISR is with our fiber, uh, system. I believe that, uh, um, it, it's some maintenance on our fiber, uh, work, but it has, it has to do with, uh, with our IS system.
Okay, gotcha. So it's not as creepy and mysterious as it sounds?
No, no.
Um, let's see, uh, page nine, electro watchman incorporated. There's a camera system at city halls. When you could tell us a little bit more about that.
Yeah. So we have, uh, new video surveillance system that was put in uh, in the city hall. So there's three interior and two exterior cameras that were put in. This was part of the cares project.
Okay.
And they'd be the monitoring company, right?
Yeah, that's this, yeah, exactly.
Watchman, I believe is the monitor company.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. And then page fifteen, um, one from Midwest Aqua Care for the levy tree control. Now normally the, for the levy, I know that this is highly regulated in terms of what we can do with trees. So is it something, is it just like maintenance for the trees themselves or is it like?
For your removal.
True removal. Certification, right?
Yeah, we have to go through and you get voluntary trees that pop up every year. So we have to go through and actually remove all that.
Yeah. And it's one of those things where like, I know when we built the levy, the core is like, yeah, that's fine. And then after Katrina came and they went and reassessed and said, we couldn't do that, right?
Well, they actually told us to plant trees to begin with, and then they came back and told us we had to take them out.
Yeah. So it's, thank you, Corps of Engineers for that change.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the record, I can't get trees to grow on my own property and it drives me crazy. The trees just naturally grow by themselves.
Grow up.
On his property?
Water on them.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, last question here. Um, page twenty-six, universal protection. And so they have the event security and I thought we weren't really hosting events at the event center anymore or?
Yeah. So this is actually, this would be like if there was a wedding or something like that. There has been some, uh, events. They haven't been able to have over eighty people, but part of the package is they get security there too.
Okay. So these are like small events, right? Yeah, okay. Got it. Okay. Cool. Thank you. That's all you got.
I just, I just got a couple. There's one on page twenty-one, uh, rocket crane for stouten. Did we have to pay to the crane service to put those culverts in? And
That would have been part of the, uh, reconstruction project.
But why would we separately pay the crane? Wouldn't that be part of the contractors?
I'd have to check on that.
Yeah, just check out. I, I just thought it was strange. All I saw was stouten. So it could have been something else somewhere else, but um, and then on, on twenty-seven, uh, Wolf Motors, we must have bought a new vehicle.
Yeah.
Is Wolf Motors now the state contract?
Yep.
Oh, they are. Oh, that's nice. I'm not close. So, okay. All right, that's it. Anyone else have a question on a bill? All right. I look for a motion to, uh, pay the bills.
So moved by Wong.
Motion by council member Wong.
Second by council member Gra.
Second by council member Gra to pay the bills. Session. Nate, you want to call it or you want me?
Un, unmuting. Yeah, I can call it. Uh, council member Wong.
Hi.
Council member Gra.
Yes.
Council member Hatfield.
Yes.
Council member Hubbard.
Yes.
And Mayor Winchell.
Hi. Passes five-oh. All right. Moves us into, um, uh, other, 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 where are we going to start here? Let's start on top. Uh, council member Gra.
All right. Um, just looking for a, a city hall construction update. I know there was some deadlines to meet. I think we're getting close to those deadlines. I was just kind of curious on what the updates on the city hall construction and the, the library area and the police station.
Right, Nate? We're, uh, substantially complete. Um, we went through punchless items today with the contractor. So there's which is typical, you know, there's, there's odd end things that they need to address and get done, but, um, everything's up and functioning. If you were to come in, you would, you would see what looks like a, a pretty much done project here.
Awesome. Um, just a, uh, a thank you to the city for snow removal as we enter that season. I also like to save this as a safety moment for everyone. Uh, in regards to, you know, when you're interacting with, uh, city equipment as well as state MINDOT equipment. Be safe, stay back, stay smart, stay alive, right? I think that's actually the MINDOT's, uh, almost exact slogan there, right? Um, you know, they're all doing a lot, doing a job that we appreciate, that is well needed and appreciated. So we should give them the space and respect that. Um, you know, be mindful of that. I think as we unfortunately enter that season where that will be more frequent. So I know there's been, uh, two occurrences now and be, be, uh, be smart with it and driving to as well. Um, I know we had a, uh, special session, uh, or special meeting on Friday to certify the vote. I just want to again, thank everyone who participated in the democratic process. It was strong turnout. I'm going to say the number wrong, but I think it was like ninety-one percent off the top of my head. The city of Chaska of eligible voters voted. Um, I just appreciate that process, you know, with, with quite a bit early vote and absentee vote, which I think is appreciated. And then just appreciate all again to all the poll, uh, peoples that work at the polls and the election judges. Uh, you know, it's never an easy job. Uh, it's, it's, it's a lot of standing. It's a lot of sitting. It's a lot of interacting. And, you know, the, the pandemic and COVID didn't make things any easier. So I thought they were well-run. They were safe. Um, and, uh, appreciated everyone who took time to, to do that as a, uh, participation with the city. So and then lastly, I will, uh, I, I said to my wife, um, that every once in a while, I, at times feel like I can't escape the pandemic and, and I constantly remind people in these meetings about things, but you know, I, I, I think today to me is, is, you know, Eastern Carver County Schools are transitioning on Wednesday to distance learning. So just a couple of things. I just, you know, this is not the school board meeting, but I do want to just say, I appreciate the teachers for all the planning that goes into making that transition. I appreciate the administrators for making those tough decisions. No decisions that are easy by any means. Um, you know, I look forward to, uh, making that transition and, and hopefully we all do the right things as a community to hopefully come January one that we can transition back. Um, you know, I also want to do just a, a special thank you for, you know, the individuals who are working our club care programs, uh, for tier one and for club care. Uh, because although, you know, a lot of the schools that went to distance learning, you know, there are families. Uh, cause although, you know, a lot of the schools that want distance learning, you know, there are families who rely on that care. And they're pivoting, you know, they're gonna go to be almost teachers to some degree because distance learning two point O, it does involve them being online and being connected a much longer time and, um, you know, and then a shout out to the families, right? It is, it's I, for someone who today who attempted to work from home, even though I'm sitting in my office right now, uh, I came in. Uh, but work from home with two kids who didn't have school today, I, it is tough. And I know we had conversations about space and everything like that. So, you know, for everyone who had, is touched by that decision, understand that, you know, it, it's, we'll get through this together and, and, and I think we'll, we'll, we'll come on the other side. So I do appreciate that. Uh, and then lastly, again, make good wise choices. You know, I, I understand, you know, the, the state has kinda been the, I guess, some aspects is, you know, they're not trying to uh, be the no fun state. Uh, but I do, I did notice today that they actually have curbed their recommendations down and say that, you know, Thanksgiving really should probably be your immediate family. And I think there's some strong concerns. We're running out of, of hospital beds and, and, and our nurses or, or doctors are working long hours. So not an easy decision for anyone to have to make and, and tough. And so, um, and everyone has to make that personal decision. But I, I hope, you know, people take some time to think about that, cause um, it's not any, it's, we're entering the holiday season where it's not an easy decision to say, you know what, I'm gonna just stick to my bubble. So with that, uh, that is really all I had was just kinda those, those topics.
And Councilmember Gra, if I could add, uh, ninety-two point nine four percent was our voting total.
I underreported it, which at ninety-one percent is awesome that I underreported. So thank you for that correction.
And, and Carver County, I, I was guessing at numbers, uh, Carver County as a whole was ninety-four point five percent. And forty-eight percent voted at the polls, fifty-two percent voted, uh, absentee or early voting basically. So it definitely shows you the shift. And uh, I think somebody already said this, but I was really happy for all the people that stood in line for a long time to vote absentee, so I could walk right into my polling place and vote. So greatly appreciated. So.
I will say that this, one more thing to add on, and I will say this is a non-political statement, but no, no new, no press or, there's no such thing as bad press, but I do wanna point out that I had a friend who lives in Washington DC, send me an article with several of our Chaska council people, or excuse me, Chaska residents, excuse me, uh, in the New York Times today that was quoted. So again, it's not a political statement based on the article, but, you know, anytime Chaska is mentioned at a national level, there's no such thing as bad press when it comes to that. So I thought that was interesting to have, and, and actually they dug into the story, which was interesting because they had several quotes from residents of Chaska. So I thought that was interesting to see, especially when I had a friend from Washington DC, you know, shoot it to me in a text saying, hey, Chaska's in the New York Times today, so.
Yeah, I was, I was real, I was surprised too. I got the, I gotta, I, I was reading the New York Times today and saw that. I didn't fool anybody there. Go out of his chair, ring roll. But uh, no, I got it sent to me as well and I thought, whoa, that's quite the, quite the story. But you know what? I got a call from a reporter in New York Times about three weeks ago. So I don't, why all of a sudden we're on the radar? I'm not really sure. I mean, maybe it's a good thing. Um, so.
Voting totals. It was our voting totals. Like the shift, like the articles explained, I think.
No, this one, but the one earlier, Matt, you remember? Because I told you about what, what, what she called me about. I can't remember.
I can't remember what, what she called, but I will say that I do believe we have a new, New York Times reporter in Chaska.
Yeah, well.
A freelance reporter for the New York Times.
Yeah, because I got, I got a call from them and I, I kinda just, I can't think of it. So, so yeah, so we're somehow in the radar, which is so far a good thing, so far.
It was like the hundred sexiest mayors in America?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure that's what it was. I'm sure I fell right in that one. Nice one. Now it's up to you there, Mr. Wong.
Okay, um, so first of all, just.
You're just mad at me because I said about growing hair. I get it.
So let's see, I'll start with, um, so November eleventh is a little past us, but just wanted to thank all the men and women of the armed forces who serve our country. Um, thank you again. So, you know, it's one of those things that's kinda interesting. This year feels like there's a lot of people who I didn't realize had served, but you know, like Marshall, for example, is one who like, you know, served and, um, you know, and, and there's a number of others, but you know, it's just amazing how many people like, you know, and, and uh, uh, Councilmember Hubbard's husband, for example, served and, you know, how many people serve our nation? And you don't even realize it sometimes because you just know them after their time and, you know, and it's just amazing. So just wanted to thank everyone for their service and just make sure to convey that sincere thank you from all, you know, from myself and everyone. Um, the food distribution event on November twelfth at the Getney Factory sounded like it was a rousing success. I wasn't able to make it this time, but this was through the snow that uh, was happening. So certainly it sounded like it was a fun time, um, for those who were there. And, you know, a lot of people, you know, certainly attended too.
Me my feeling and my feet, so.
You finally like, you're getting your uh, your.
I thought you couldn't make that.
Oh, I was there the whole time.
Oh, I thought when I asked you at the last meeting, you said you couldn't make it. Oh, cause I, I texted Julie and she said she had plenty of help, so I didn't come down.
There was lots of volunteers. It just, it was like the snow came at like the worst time, cause the food truck hadn't arrived yet or had just arrived. And it was like everyone was standing there and it was just like snowy and hard on them. But once, once the cars started going through a guy, it, it went really fast.
Cool. Um, so then yesterday, one of the, this is one of the things I find, I, I always feel like I have to mention because it's incredibly inspirational to me. Is that, um, yesterday, um, SpaceX and NASA launched four crew members and a part of this crew one to International Space Station. Um, congratulations to everyone who was involved with that. Um, you know, this is one of those things I call out specifically because accomplishment like that is no minor feat. And, you know, there's no other nation in the world that does send commercial spacecraft into orbit. And it's a big deal. And this is one of those things that, this is just the beginning of a, a great journey where we'll be able to have, you know, commercial space flight and people will be able to effectively start buying tickets to, you know, take flights into space. Um, so this is one of those things where it's like, it's, it's, it's a nation behind it. So I wanted to call it out because to me it's not just launching a rocket. This is like a national effort to accomplish something. So I think it's a huge, huge accomplishment for us as a nation. So just wanted to call it out that, uh, congratulations to them. And um, and hopefully they'll have a very uneventful six months onboard the ISS. Uh, upcoming events, um, I got November nineteenth, um, the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan is doing a presentation from five thirty to seven thirty PM. That's gonna be online. And there's also gonna be neighborhood discussions will be taking place too. Um, I believe I shared some information on, you know, online, but I think there's information that Carver County is also sharing as well. So if you're interested in that and, you know, and following that, that's the area around, um, was it, uh, was seventy-eighth street and also highway five two? So, and that whole area is undergoing a, a planning for re, reconstruction of the roadways there. So, um, and also on Wednesday, November eighteenth, there's gonna be a blood drive at the two twelve medical center from nine AM to three PM. And this is for my fellow colleagues, um, on the, on the council here. On November eighteenth, the Metro Cities is having a policy adoption, uh, meeting. And so, and unfortunately due to work obligations, I'm not able to attend. But, you know, I was hoping that someone else would be able to attend that to represent Chaska to hold, carry the flag. Since that, you know, one of the things that's actually on there is something that, you know, myself and some other members of the suburban transit association were able to, um, you know, to have like, you know, change in the language, which was to add in some language specifically supporting South, uh, suburban transit providers such as Southwest Transit. Some of the language that I'll just call out here, I'll just read is the Metro City supports stable and predictable state and regional revenue sources to fund operating and capital expenses for all regional transit providers and metro, metro mobility at sufficient level to meet growing operational and capital transit needs for the region and to expand the system to areas that lack sufficient transit options. And so this is something was, it doesn't sound like it's, you know, you know, a lot, but it's very meaningful in the sense that this is policy. This is a, a policy statement for where Metro City stands as representing the, you know, the communities of the Twin Cities. Um, in terms of something that's given to policymakers to say, this is what the values are for people who live in the Twin Cities. That we value, um, regional transit providers and having funding sufficient to keep them operating at sufficient needs or at sufficient levels. So that's something I wanna make sure that everyone knows that we, you know, that we worked hard to get that into the language in there. And that hopefully that will help influence some decision makers, um, as they kind of look to that for a policy guidance as they cast their votes in the legislature.
Is it, is it controversial that it wouldn't pass?
It's not controversial. It's more just as a statement that, that as Metro Cities as, as member communities and Metro Cities, that this is a core value to us. So when something comes up related to transit funding, this is, this is a position that Metro Cities represents all, you know, certainly all the member communities that says, you know, this is important to us, communities within the Twin Cities, that we support transit funding. And so from a legislator's perspective, and this is one of those things where there's, you know, in-state and out-state legislators. This sort of, you know, provides that context to say, is this something that's important to you guys or is it not? So someone who may be from outstate, for example, who isn't aware of some of the, the needs here, they say, well, why do we need to give funding to those guys, right? It's, you know, kinda gives them context that, no, this is something that's really important to our communities. Um, and so that's one of the reasons why we work really hard to make sure we have this as a policy, because, you know, Metro Cities can often, you know, provide guidance and information to those uh, legislators when they ask like, should I vote on this or should I not?
What, what, uh, when is that?
Uh, so that's on November eighteenth. That's um, two days from now.
Eighteenth to Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can. I got tab and.
Yeah.
I got two meetings in a row, three meetings.
Yeah, I know.
Is it all day?
Uh, no, I think it's in the afternoon. It's like at four in the afternoon, I believe.
Oh, wow. I could probably, probably be there. I'd have to check, but I could likely, that sounds like I could be.
Okay, I'll send you some funny information for you. I'll send it to you, Michaela.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay. Thank you. Just two other quick things. Um, just like, you know, again, thank you. I know that schools are pivoting. So thank you to all the teachers and all of the students and families who are pivoting back to distance learning, you know, cause I know it's a big change. I know teachers spending a lot of time making that pivot. And the last thing, as you say, quick question is that, um, is that we have, um, commission openings coming up pretty soon, right? Cause December we start asking soliciting for commission applications and December we do appointments, right?
We're actively soliciting now. We're taking applications now. So we would like them by December fifteenth in order to schedule, uh, the interviews that'll happen in January.
Awesome. Um, that's, that hasn't been put out there in the communications from the city or?
Yeah, you need anything on that yet, so I may have just missed it.
But, cool. Sounds good. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hubbard.
Okay. Uh, so in the, in the amidst for time, I, I typed up something. I only got track. I, I don't wanna sound really preachy, but I don't know about you guys, but I feel like this week has, like the last week or so, like, like John had alluded to, like COVID's really raging through this community. So I just wanna make sure that my tone sounds good, so I'm gonna read off what I wanna say today, cause I feel like it's very important. Uh, so last week I volunteered at the food distribution event and, uh, you know, we distributed food, um, to over four hundred families. It's one of many that I've been, um, very grateful to be able to volunteer at. And I was, as I was out there freezing in the snow, all I could think of was how I was out in that same location in June or July, and I was so hot that I thought I might pass out. So my, how the weather changes in Minnesota, but it also really just kind of showcases how long we've been in this. And I feel extremely grateful to be able to volunteer at these events. And I feel extremely grateful of the partnerships that we have in place in this local area to be able to put on those events. And I see the need, you know, at every box that you load inside someone's vehicle is, there's a need there. Um, and it's, uh, disheartening to watch as we, you know, s- gone through this in eight months. And I realize that some of it isn't pandemic induced, a lot of it is as well. So, um, I just wanted to express some thoughts, cause we're heading into the Thanksgiving holiday as well as just the holiday season overall. Co- COVID is blazing through our community and people can feel it, like I had mentioned in the forefront. This year is like no other and all of our normal traditions that we enjoyed are being flipped upside down and inside out with recommendations to not gather in large groups outside of our immediate household, to be cautious when doing activities like shopping or other social activities that you normally engage in. I wanna put forward and ask, or maybe even a plea into this community to please listen and consider and follow these suggestions from our state and local health, government, health agencies. We work really, if, how we work together in these next few weeks is gonna determine how we can slow the spread of COVID in our own community. We hold the key to the survival of many businesses that are just barely hanging on and making it through this crisis. For our schools to be able to reopen for in-person learning and for our local hospitals to be able to handle the patient loads and the general health and safety of our neighbors and family members. I understand that there is a kaleidoscope of feelings in regards to the effectiveness of masks, capacity limitations, curfew restrictions, but really the bottom line is that many don't feel safe. Even if those restrictions were not in place. And it's really devastating to watch community businesses fail or be stretched to the limit and the breaking point. These businesses are essentially dreams of our, and livelihoods of our community members that are being crushed and is hard to watch it play out like this. And it's within our control, but it's out of their control at this point. As a collective community, it is in our control. Everything we do is a choice. And I think that if we as a community sacrifice and make more smart and make good choices, we'll have less consequences. And I realize that it's not ideal, like wearing face masks, staying home for the holidays or staying home even when you come in contact with someone that's tested positive. And I know it's sacrificial in regards to those family gatherings and the traditions that might create that unsafe environment. But these hard choices that we're gonna make in the short term and the, really in the long term, they're gonna bring our numbers down. And they're gonna keep our fellow community residents safe and our businesses open. And hopefully our schools do reopen sooner rather than later. So I just, I'm just asking for everybody in our community to really consider as we go into these next few weeks, that this is not like any other normal time, but we can do this. We're really strong and we can pull through this together, but we all have to do it together. And that's kinda like my, getting off my soapbox, but that's what I have to say at this meeting.
Well said. I think, uh, that's, that's important and, and yep, we hold the key on, on what, what happens in our next phases. But, um, I, I agree with you, people, there's, I, I, I'm trying to think where I was today. I saw somebody walk in and no mask and it's just, I, I don't like to wear a mask either, but it's not hard. It's not hard. It's not difficult. And if I can prevent somebody from getting it, if I can prevent from getting it, even the better. I agree. Well said. Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Oh, uh, have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too. I didn't know if you intended, I think you were just intending that to me, but.
Of course. Just you, Mark.
All right. Uh, Councilor Ha- uh, Hubbard, Hatfield, the other H.
The other H. Um, well, I didn't prepare a speech. That was very good, Taylor. Um, I did just want to mention a few things. I'll do COVID last and I'll try not to be redundant. Um, it is, uh, I just wanted to congratulate all the newly elected leaders and everybody who ran, cause that's a lot of work. When I was campaigning, I said, everybody should have to work this hard in their life at least once for something. And I will always remember that because it was really hard work. So, um, congratulations to everyone. Cause even if you didn't win, you still won, cause you got an amazing experience. So, um, congratulations there. And then September, nope, nope, or November, November twenty-eighth is a shop small Saturday. So just a reminder that this season more than ever, uh, support your. Uh, support your local businesses, buy gift cards, um. You know, purchase things from their shops. Uh, sh- even if you're shopping online, shop online from a, from a small business, they're out there. Um. So please do that. It's, there's businesses literally depending on. People showing up this holiday season and shopping in their small businesses. Um, so that's that. And then, um, I too just wanted to touch on. Uh, COVID really quick and talk to people my age and younger. We are the ones spreading it around. They have shown that in studies. We're out there willy-nilly getting everybody infected. So, uh, for the love of God, please stay home. And, uh, get tested. They're urging, um, all eighteen to thirty-five year olds to get tested. Whatever you think of testing, I mean, it's. Well, it's not a big deal. Um, I, they, I believe they just opened up the at-home testing to everyone, so you don't have an excuse. The at-home testing was super easy. I did it a few weeks ago. Um. And the most awkward part was a lady watching me spit into a tube for five minutes. So other than that, it was so easy. I had my results back. In literally a few hours after the lab received it. Um, and then, you know. Um, you go from there. So please get tested. The governor, um, had an address today. He invited two nurses that are on the front lines. Um. And one of them said, really stuck with me, uh. Was please Minnesota, stay homeless Thanksgiving, so you don't have to ring in the new year with me. So especially like I said to my. To people my age and younger, um, we, I, I tested positive when I took it. When I took that test I was talking about. So, um, I literally thought I had been at a large event working. And I literally thought I just had a, um, little cough from turning my furnace on because it was dry. And everybody was like, nah, you, you don't have it. Oh, now my fire alarm's going off. But it'll be, um, it's not a concern. Someone's cooking. Um, so.
When you disappear into smoke, we should call nine one one or what?
No, I'll be fine.
Yeah, I'll be good.
I'm worried about my dog. Anyways. So anyways, it was, I literally thought I had just like a scratchy throat, a little cough from turning my furnace on. And I, if I hadn't been safe and hadn't already known that I was at a large event and I should get tested. I would have been out there spreading it to people. So, um, thankfully I immediately quarantined after the event. I'm a wedding planner. I know that I have to do that. Um, and thankfully I did and spent my time, um, quarantining. So please, young people get tested and please stay homeless Thanksgiving. I know it's not fun, but it just gets us out of this sooner. So, um, that's my speech to, to the young folks so that we don't. Keep messing it up for everybody. So just stay home. I know it's not fun. I don't like it either, but. Um, and that's all I have.
Yeah. So you're feeling okay though?
Oh, yeah, I li- literally I felt fine. I think it was the second time I had it. Um, I literally felt pretty fine the whole time. I still can't smell some things. I can smell a little, but. Uh, like I said, I literally was like, there's no way I have it. Everybody was like, there's no way you have it. My mom was having surgery. She's like, you can be around me. And I'm like, no, mom, like I've got a little cough and I was at a big event. I shouldn't be around you. She's like, you don't have it. I did. So, um, that's why it's important. If you don't think you have it.
Smell that burnt food in your house.
Yeah, no, I can't.
All right, Luke, anything? You're muted. Luke, you're muted. Kevin, can you un, unmute Luke?
Yeah, I'm trying.
While you're trying, I'll go to Kevin Ringwald. Kevin, anything?
No, I'm good. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Uh, Nate?
I'm good.
Can you get unmuted, Luke? You're still muted.
Hit the spacebar.
Yeah, I can't, uh, I'm pressing the unmute button, but he's not unmuting. We got him on the meeting. That's all I need. That's why I was late with the flag. I was talking to Luke.
All right. Well, sorry, Luke. Uh, well, you'll just have to remember and bring it up next time. Uh, Kevin, Kevin Wright, do you have anything for us?
Uh, I thought I actually did have something, but nope, all good.
Okay, if you think of it, Matt?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. All right, thanks. Uh, just a couple, uh, things I have, um. I just wanna say thanks to the citizens for re-elected me to, as mayor for another two years. Um, even though I didn't have a opponent, it's still, it's a, it's still an important process and. Um, anytime you can get almost ninety-seven percent of the vote, uh, you have to feel very confident that they're, um. Still liking what we're doing. So thank you to everyone for that. And, and I do real quickly, thank you to all the election judges. I know that it was kind of a scary, not scary moment, but there's people that were more hesitant this year than ever about being judges, but. And I know some of our staff were head judges, so thank you to all of that. So, thanks, everyone. Uh. Stoughton Avenue open late today, so that's open now. Um, so you can travel over the bridge and through the woods to grandmother's house, but not on Thanksgiving cuz we can't go out this year. So. Um. Chaska Hawks are gonna be in a playoff game, maybe, if that doesn't change. So good luck to the Hawks. Uh, Sorhawks Vikings won tonight. I saw a flash on my phone. Um, quickly, I wanna say, um. Thank you to all of our healthcare workers. They now more than ever have been putting in. Super triple overtime and you can see when healthcare workers are out telling us that we should stay home. It's getting pretty serious out there. So I would, I just wanna say thank you to the healthcare workers. From PD Fire all the way up to, uh, uh, our emergency surgeons and doctors and nurses and every. So thank you for the work that you do and putting yourself, uh, in danger every time that you, uh, see a patient. So thank you for that. And I too wanna just, uh, real quickly, we need to continue to support our local businesses. It's very, very important. That we do and, and, you know, get out what you can, keep your, keep your, uh, times there short. And get in and out and, and do things. And so support your businesses any way that you can, uh, restaurants all are. Still providing takeouts and stuff like that. So we don't wanna go inside. So. Um, we gotta continue to do that. Lastly, uh, I, I too will just say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. It'll be different, uh, challenging that we probably won't be able to spend it with our loved ones, but, um. We have to make the best of it and we have to make the decisions that we feel are, uh, right for your families. And, um, as Michaela says. If you feel any kind of symptom, go get tested. And, um, so have a great day. And, uh, for future, we have a council meeting this, I think it's the thirtieth. Is that right? Thirtieth? So we do have another council meeting on the thirtieth. And then we have our truth and taxation meeting, the first meeting. Is it second meeting in December, right?
No, first meeting. On the sixth, seventh?
Yeah, seventh. Okay, so that's Pearl Harbor Day. Uh, so, uh, but, uh, so we'll have our truth and taxation. Um, if you have any questions about our budget, there's a Beyond the Budget series that's out on Chaska Communications and through YouTube. So. Um, they are available. So if you got any questions about what we're looking at, we are, you know, doing some. Things that we have fallen behind on. So there will be some, uh, increases. So. All right, with that, I, uh, again, uh, have a great Thanksgiving, uh, last call. Otherwise I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
The Hawks game got, um, they, Wilmington Jefferson had to forfeit due to COVID, so.
Yeah, but they're already scheduled with Mankato West now, so they eliminated that round and they just went around two.
Well, but that'll be Saturday, so Tuesday's game is not happening.
Okay, yeah, November twenty first, I think I saw that.
Yeah.
That game was, yep.
Kevin, can you hear me now?
Hey, Luke.
Yep.
I just got two things, three things. One important one, I was gonna tell you the Vikings one, but Matt, can you on the, um. The, uh, uh. Agreement with leasing, uh, property or the community center portion to with. Uh, arts, can you make sure in that letter of understanding that everything important is in there? Because that's just, you know, when you draft the actual lease, that's just, you know, formalizing. The letter of understanding. And so if there's something important that wasn't negotiated, not in there, it might be difficult, but I think everybody's gonna get along. Then one, or the last thing, it has nothing to do with, uh, with legalities or anything like that, but. Couple of weeks ago, I bought ten pounds of. Coffee at Dunn Brothers and delivered it to Bountiful Basket and I had it in two paper bags. And what they wanted, the paper bags more than they wanted the coffee. And so I said, well, you need some. Well, I've been saving them. So I can, went home and got thirty of them and they were unbelievably thankful. And I never entered my mind that. If you got, uh, paper bags that you, you just don't throw them away, take them to them and they just love them. Cuz they need them because that's how the people get to take their food away.
Okay. Well, good to know. Well, and I'm glad you got off mute.
I am too now. Everybody be safe.
All right.
One quick thing, um. Yeah, the Metro Cities thing is on Thursday, the nineteenth, in case anyone can go.
Oh. So I'll, I'll look at that. Gail, if you're at home, go ahead. That'd be good for you.
I'm done quarantining now, but yes.
Let me know what happens. I'll see if I got, if I can get in there too. Um, also, uh, just two quick things, Matt. Uh, did I understand that right? That the big tree lighting in Fireman's Park, we're just gonna light the day after Thanksgiving?
Yeah, we're gonna do, uh, we're gonna sort of tape, uh, a virtual lighting sort of thing that will be on so the kids can watch on TV. But that'll be separate from just turning on the t- tree.
Okay. All right. And, and then, uh, the one hundred club. Uh, we- we'll be just doing it virtual and tickets are, are, are available, correct?
Yeah, so I'll be getting out to people, uh, who have got them in the past, but if you're interested, it's this year, it's, it's just a hundred dollars. Cuz we're not having dinner. And, uh, it's on Sunday, December sixth at five thirty PM, we're gonna have a, a virtual Zoom event where people's names get drawn. But you, you don't need to be present to win.
Okay, I, and I, and I do want a ticket, so.
Give me one too, Matt.
All right, this is easy.
I'll take one too, Matt.
Me too.
All right.
There you go.
Come and get mine though, because you don't let me in the city hall anymore.
Uh, just you.
So, and then what about City Park? What are we doing up there for that lighting? Have we determined anything?
Uh, there is not a, there's not a hometown holiday celebration this year, so we'll just be turning on the lights there too.
Are we gonna do that Thanksgiving too?
Think we're gonna do everything. I don't know if you know different, Nate, but I think we're planning just having everything right after Thanksgiving on.
Okay.
On that subject, if I can just mention there, um, the Downtown Business Alliance is planning. I think in conjunction with Park and Rec, um, some other fun things, but I think they're still finalizing it. So. Uh, maybe we'll get to share more at the November thirtieth meeting, but, um. Think ice sculptures and lights and things. So some good social distancing fun.
Yeah, and that'll actually be throughout the winter.
Yes.
Not just during December.
Right.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Cool, yeah. Keep us, bring us up on that cuz I, I don't know. I'm, I've. Gotta write a couple of letters and I didn't, I didn't know how to answer some of those questions. So, um, but, all right. Okay, Mike Tudor, you're on. You need anything or got any? No, you're good. All right, last call. Otherwise I'm looking for adjournment.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember, uh, Wong, second by Councilmember Hatfield, uh. Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong. Did you say yes?
I said I, yes.
Okay. And Mayor, one July, we are adjourned. Have a great night. Happy Thanksgiving and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.